Council members, Drayman.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here. The flag salute this evening will be led by Councilmember Friedman and the invocation by City Clerk, Ardashas Kasakian.
Please put your right hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. "The true greatness of a nation is founded on principles of humanity," wrote Thomas Paine. As we mark the day of our Declaration of Independence, let us remember to pause and reflect upon the great sacrifices made in the name of humanity, from our own revolution to the others it has inspired around the world. We pray in remembrance of the sacrifices made by men, women, people of various ethnicities and races who have reminded us of our commitment to the principles of humanity which nourish the roots of our liberties and freedoms. We pray for a peaceful and safe July 4th celebration this weekend. May this great nation and all who have fought to defend it be blessed as we remember them on our Independence Day. Amen. Report. The agenda for the June 30th, 2009, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Thursday, June 25th, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Next.
At 3:00 is presentation and appointments, and at 3:00 is agenda preview for the meetings of July 7th, 2009.
Ms. Beers.
Mayor, I'm going to go to John Tactalian, Assistant to the City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the City Council. The July 7th meeting for the Glendale Housing Authority has one business agenda item on there. At 6:00 A is the Acting Director of Community Development and Housing regarding a professional services agreement with Kane Ballmer Burke Man for specialized legal services for affordable housing development during the 2009-2010 fiscal year. Under the Glendale Redevelopment Agency Agenda, there's also one item. At 6:00 A is a status report on the By Glendale Awareness and Promotion Campaign. Under the joint public meetings of the Glendale City Council and Glendale Housing Authority, there are two items. The first is a report regarding the Community Development Block Grant entitlement and revised action plan for 2009-2010, and the second is a report regarding the CDBG Federal Economic Stimulus Proposed Action Plan. Under the Glendale City Council Agenda, there's a number of recurring consent items that are regular in nature, as well as a number of action items. At 8:00 A is a Director of Public Works regarding the proposed continuous barrier center median on Glenwood Road between Virginia Avenue and Concord Street, and at 8:00 B is Director of Public Works regarding the city of La Canada Flintridge seeking approval by the Glendale City Council to create an assessment district for various sewer improvements, including six parcels located in the city of Glendale. And finally, there's two hearings. The first is regarding the proposed fees for the planning department, and the second hearing is an appeal of designer review board case located at 2064 Buckingham Place.
All right, and let me, at this point, introduce the Deputy City Manager Yasmin Beers, who will be sitting in for City Manager Starbird. Next, Mr. Clerk?
At 3:00 B is the reappointment of Ms. Laura Prossing to the Glendale Housing Authority.
Mr. Weaver.
I'd like to move 3:00 B. Laura's done a great job over the years with Don Mincy. Haven't had two better people served in the years. Laura was fretting because we hadn't put this on the agenda, but we can really use her back on. She's improved a great deal now, asked a lot of questions, which is very healthy, so that's my nomination.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
All right, any other comments? Roll call.
Council members, Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next.
Now it's time for City Council and staff comments.
Any comments from council? Mr. Weaver?
One, public service announcement. People tend to forget it, and I saw it happen this last weekend when it was 100 degrees out. I saw a couple sitting with their small dog tied up to them. They were in the shade and the dog was in the sun, and the dog kept jumping around. I knew it was trying to get out of the sun, because what people don't realize is your feet are hot on pavement, bare feet, just as hot on the dog. So remember, when you're out with your dogs walking, if you're on a hot pavement and you can't get them in the shade, they're feeling the heat just as much as you, they simply can't tell you. So please watch it with the animals as we get this hot, hot weather out there. Second thing, I don't know, these articles keep appearing in the news press, and I do have to respond once in a while. This last one is by Mr. Mohill that he wrote. He says, "I intimidate him." Well, just for the record, he does not intimidate me. He writes in his last article, "I doubt if Quintero, Drayman, and Weaver appreciate the similarities between their actions and those that are going on in Iran." It's really something when we, what we're doing here is equated to what's happened in Iran. He says, "Democracy debate is resisted by those who have become accustomed to having it their way." As far as I know, the public elected us, notably the vote of three to two does make it our way. That's the system we live in. He says, "Today, council members don't debate the speaker during agenda items as the law allows. We take testimony on any agendized item. People are free to talk for the allotted time. Then we can talk. It's not a debate society. We can either say we agree with the people that speak, or we don't, but it's not a debate." Even in oral communications, it says there will be no debate. He says, "The people are taking the abuse from the dais." Well, I don't know what the abuse is. We listen. We don't have to agree necessarily. They say that council members always get the last word in any discussion. That is true. We always do. That's the way it works. Where is the option for debate that the Brown Act allows for public participation? We have oral communication, and we take testimony on every action item, so I don't know what he is talking about. And he talks about democracy, but in Glendale, we have our own authoritarian council members learning to behave like dictators in training. And that's really an insult to all of us currently and in the past, that we're becoming dictators like in some other countries in the world. That is just, it's uncalled for. I know the press has the right to print this kind of garbage, but it's really uncalled for. It doesn't mean that I'm upset. I'm kind of laughing about it, but I wish there'd be more respect shown for the people that the public elect. You don't like us, you voted us out of office. And if you're out there and you don't like it, run for office, get elected and replace us, and then you can have it your way. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Friedman?
Yes. Yesterday, it was my pleasure to attend the Los Angeles Building Council's annual sustainability summit, and it was a really wonderful event that was very well attended by hundreds of people representing the largest companies and corporations in Los Angeles and the area, as well as a lot of elected representatives, including Barbara Boxer and Los Angeles Mayor Antonio V. Regusa, and many others. And a few things struck me that I wanted to communicate, and there were a lot of, I learned a lot of really interesting things, but one of the things that struck me was that this crisis that we're in right now, and we are in, in a lot of ways, an ecological crisis brought on by global warming, by a lack of resources, particularly water, but the business community, I think, is really beginning to realize that this crisis creates an incredible amount of opportunities in terms of new job creation and efficiencies that will benefit them and their businesses. So a few things that struck me were, a statistic I heard that I didn't realize, that the United States spends a billion dollars a day, a billion dollars a day, that we send to the Middle East in exchange for crude oil. It's an incredible amount of money, and when you think about what that money is buying in places like Dubai, where they're building entire beautiful cities and spending the money on weapons and armor and arms, and that's money that really should be staying in the U.S. And while we're in this incredible crisis that we're in, in a depression or recession, to be spending that amount of money, to be exporting our wealth for crude oil when there are alternatives available, is really pretty incredible. And as these new technologies come online, because we do have the brain power in California to be developing this technology, we can kind of kill two birds with one stone. We can not only create new businesses and new industries, which is happening, but we can also now begin to keep that wealth here, in California and in the United States. But what I wanted to just communicate was that there's a very clear link, very clear nexus, between local policies that we have or don't have in terms of alternative transportation, complete streets, things that will keep people from using cars, and our national security and our national wealth. And that's one of the reasons why I think it's so important that we take as many actions as we can at the local level and be as aggressive as we can in terms of conservation and efficiency and reducing our need to be driving everywhere. And not only does it improve our local quality of life, but it also impacts our national security in, I think, very direct and obvious ways.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Friedman. Mr. Najarian.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to inform everyone that this past Sunday, myself, Councilmember Friedman, Councilmember Dave Weaver, and I'm not sure if you came a little bit later.
Yeah.
I didn't see at the very beginning, attended the Western Diocese of the Armenian Church of North Americas. We could call it a topping-out party. They are building a cathedral located in Burbank, and last Sunday, they had the occasion to place the cross by way of a huge crane on top of the dome of the cathedral. And it is very awe-inspiring. It's a beautiful location. Unfortunately, it's not in Glendale, but many of the parishioners and faithful do reside in Glendale, and I'm hoping that they have a speedy completion in September of 2010, and they do great work for the community, in the Glendale community, for our youth, seniors, and the adults as well. So congratulations to Archbishop Hovnan Dardarian for that accomplishment, as well as everyone on their construction committee. The other point, the other announcement actually I want to make is, finally, after talking about it for months and months, I was officially elected to the MTA chairmanship position. I'm starting, thank you, and I know you heard, you heard a lot about it, but it's finally here. It starts tomorrow, July 1st, and as I said before, I'm going to do everything I can to make sure Glendale and our region gets its fair share of transportation dollars to help us break the cycle of dependency on crude oil. We have great projects, subways, light rail, transit lines, and van pools, et cetera, in the works, and I will keep you posted as those exciting projects begin to break ground. So thank you to my colleagues for their support through the years and letting me obtain this position, and everyone in the public. It's go time for Glendale. Thank you.
That must be a transportation term. Congratulations, Mr. Najarian. Mr. Drayman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me start by congratulating my colleague, Mr. Najarian. That is good for the city. It's great for the city to have you there, and so we'll be looking forward to your reports. Mr. Mayor, there are two Fourth of July-related events in the north part of the city this weekend. Let me remind the public about them now. One is the Fourth of July fireworks program at La Crescent Elementary School in La Crescent, corner of La Crescent Avenue and Prospect. The event starts at 4:00 with rides and food and entertainment, and culminates at 9:00 with the fireworks show. This is not a neighborhood fireworks show. This is, as you know, for many, many years, a full-scale, large-scale fireworks presentation that includes aerial presentations that rival all of the best professionally staged shows in the Southland. Tickets are $5. Children under, I believe, under three, I believe, are free, I believe it is, and you can buy tickets at the door. And there are also rides and all kinds of family entertainment, so you can make sure that if you're not doing anything or haven't made plans yet, find your way up to La Crescent to take advantage of that. It's a wonderful event, and I mean, it is a lot of fun, just terrific. Also, this weekend on Sunday is the Eighth Annual July Block Party and classic car and hot rod show in the Montreux Shopping Park, which this year has grown to more than 150 vehicles and a total of four and a half to five blocks long. Includes the weekend harvest market, farmer's market, antiques, collectibles, memorabilia, food court, children's rides, live entertainment, and then, of course, classic stock vehicles as well as hot rods. This is an unusual show. It's the only one in the city, actually, in the region, actually, that's an invitation-only event. So this isn't quite like a cruise night where you pay a fee and park your car. You have to be invited into the event, and so that way, they try to get the best of the best of the best vehicles. Many of these are museum vehicles that you don't see in community car shows. From 9:00 a.m. till 2:00 p.m., it's a lot of fun, the Montreux Shopping Park, so come on over if you have a hole in your weekend. Usually, it's about 16,000 people that show up to this event. And then lastly, Mr. Mayor, we've been doing the Glendale History Challenge every Sunday, Sunday, pardon me. Is it already Sunday? Every Tuesday, and we had a winner last week. Actually, we had two winners. We had a tie. Peter Rouge, Glendale resident, and Bill Dodson, Glendale resident, both identified Verdugo Pharmacy, Verdugo City Pharmacy. There it is there. And that was last week's Glendale History Challenge, to name the location. And of course, the building's long gone, but its original location was corner of Honolulu Avenue and La Crescent Avenue. And the building came down after the Silmar earthquake. It was deemed unsafe, and it was torn down. Beautiful old building, inlaid brick building that existed. And incidentally, Mr. Kasakian, you'll be interested to know, because your office is the one that takes care of public, or events for public, permits for public events, that building was built on the site of the founding of Verdugo City. And Verdugo City was founded by firing a cannon from the Verdugo Hills, and where the cannonball landed was on this site, and that's where they built that. Now imagine us permitting that today. I see the fire chief in the back. I can just imagine him having that permit request come past his desk. You see, we want to put a cannon up in the hills and shoot it toward the town. Yeah. Anyway, we won't be showing another contestant photo for the Glendale History Challenge. This week, we're going to take a week off, but both Peter Rouge and Bill Dodson will be receiving by mail $25 gift certificates to the Cheesecake Factory at the Americana at brand, and next week, we'll be back with another photo for you. Pardon me?
The year.
Oh, the year of that photograph was 1954. And that is it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Well, let me start by congratulating Mr. Najarian on his appointment. I know he works very hard and takes up an awful lot of his time, but very much appreciate it.
Keeps me out of the council offices.
Yeah, keeps us out of our hair and moves them into another, not really. He's been doing a very good job for us. And then, yes, I did get an opportunity to shake the Archbishop's hand, and it's just a beautiful, beautiful structure, really, and across the street from Woodbury University. It's in a great setting there, so very positive event. And I think that's it. I did want to, he's not going to be happy with me, I want to introduce my cousin Miguel Marina, who's visiting from northern Spain, who's there. Stand up for a minute. I call him Mike. He's come to, all the way from the Pyrenees. He's come to Glendale to brush up on his English. He just had his first American-style hamburger, but he studied English in Britain, so he totally blew it. He asked for a hamburger and chips, and I told him, "No, they're called french fries in the U.S." Anyway, so very happy to have him here. And that's it. What's next, Mr. Kasakian?
At 5:00 is a consent calendar, and following a routine, and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Well, two things. I have a number of speaker cards on the consent items, but let me read into the record. In order to properly manage the business of the city, I will require that all persons desiring to speak on agenda action items under Section 8, to turn in all requests to speak cards no later than when the first item is read into the record. Any person who has not timely turned in a speaker card shall not be allowed to address the item unless the speaker arrives in the council chamber after I made the announcement. So if you want to speak on action items starting at 8:00 A, please bring your cards up to the city clerk. And I do have a number of cards on the consent items, so I want to pull 5B, 5C, 5D.
E, C, and D?
E, C, and D.
That leaves 5A.
Someone move 5A.
I'll move the rest of the consent calendar, 5A.
Second.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes, could you read 5B into the record, please?
5B is General Manager of Water and Power Regarding Annual Authority for the Purchase or Sale of Energy Services. At B1 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into contracts for the purchase or sale of energy services for a term not to exceed five years in duration and dispensing with competitive bidding.
Okay, could we hear from the Director of GWP, just to give a broad overview of the item?
Mayor Quintero, members of the City Council. This is an annual approval. The GWP comes before you each year to extend our ability to deal in the energy and natural gas market. It allows us to provide five-year contracts for purchased power and natural gas. It's just an ongoing item.
Okay, thank you. I have one speaker card, Barry Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff, of course, the public. I'm Barry Allen. I noticed that there's no fiscal impact of this, and my question being is it's on one of the boards, whether or not we are paying any brokers' fees or any brokers for this. I think that, by the way, I do think that other than that, the report from the GWP is quite good, but I'd like to know about brokers and brokerages and fees. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Steiger, do you have an answer to the speaker?
Our contracts do not include broker fees separate from the actual cost of the energy. Should there be a fee at all, it's included in the cost of the energy or the natural gas.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion in a second?
5B.
Second.
5B, one.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. 5C, please.
5C is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Regarding Report of Bids to Furnish Labor Equipment and Materials for Utility Street Repairs for Glendale Water and Power, Spec. 3383. And at C1 is a motion awarding the bid of Pavco Construction, Inc., the lowest bidder, for $2,145,000 plus contingencies.
Okay, I have one speaker card. Let's hear from the Speaker, Barry Allen.
Barry Allen, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff. The question that I have is, as this is paving, and we usually think of paving as public works, why isn't this coordinated with the public works and under the public works budget with transfers as necessary? Because we certainly could be looking at economy of scale when public works is doing paving projects and GWP needs repair projects. I just don't understand why we have two departments that are involved in paving issues. Thank you, Barry Allen.
Mr. Steiger.
Good evening. Ramona Berg, Assistant General Manager, GWP. This used to be supported by public works, but with the amount of construction that we do and the repair work that we do, public works wasn't able to support our effort. In order to not keep the streets open that long waiting for public works to coordinate, we started taking on this project ourselves. Additionally, we also have, combined with public works, we have what's called a five-year plan. We try to do our projects coincidental with when public works is opening up the streets to the extent that that can be met.
All right, any questions from the City Council? Have a motion?
5C.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. 5D, please.
5D is Director of Public Works Regarding SR-134 San Fernando Road Access and Safety Improvement Program. Fairmont Avenue Extension Project. At D1 is a resolution authorizing city manager to execute all necessary documents on behalf of the city for the conveyance of land by the California Department of Transportation to the city for the widening of Duran Street in connection with the SR-134 San Fernando Road Access and Safety Improvement Program.
One speaker card, Barry Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff, and of course, the public, Barry Allen. The question that I have here is that it indicates that there could be charges to the city for transferring of the property. Now, I know that periodically, we hear issues between Caltrans and the City of Glendale Department of Transportation and Public Works regarding coordinating efforts on signaling devices on ramps and on the freeways. Now, if this is deeded over to the city, will the city be able to make these decisions on ramp lights and traffic signals in that area without the need of Caltrans to coordinate it? Thank you.
Okay, we have a number of people that can answer that question, I believe.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the...
Your name, please.
I'm sorry. Jono Bagdianian, Traffic Transportation Administrator. The section of Doran, on the north side of Doran at San Fernando, the portion that is being dedicated or essentially relinquished to the city, we needed for a right-turn lane, has nothing to do with the freeway on and off ramps, and so if we were to do anything in that area, that would be under the jurisdiction of the city. In general, all the ramps are under the jurisdiction of Caltrans. They cooperate with us, we cooperate with them when it comes to timing of the signals or synchronizing signals that ties into the ramps. Other than that, we have to get their permission anytime we want to make any modifications to the ramps, same way that we're doing it right now on Fairmont Avenue where we are doing the bridge construction.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, there is a revised motion to include a minor modification to the reso, just to include a city waiver of a statutory notice that Caltrans is ordinarily required to give us. So if you could just make, whoever makes the motion, make it with that modification.
Mayor, make a motion, 5D, one with a modification by the city attorney.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
At 6:00 would be oral communications.
All right, we'll start oral communications with some announcements, and then we'll resume oral communications after the action items. oral communications after the action items at the end of the agenda. Start with Casey Lowe.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members. My name's Casey Lowe, and I'm the new district representative for State Senator Carol Lou. I'm sure most of you might be familiar with the names Targ Garaya, our district director, and Talene Mangiolu, our case manager, but as the new face in the office, I just thought I'd come down and formally introduce myself to all of you. As always, if there's anything our office can do to support the council, please don't hesitate to call on us. We're located just a couple of minutes away on 710 South Central in Glendale. My email address is my name, kasey.casey.low@senfinancie.ca.gov. So thank you for your time, and I wish you all good night.
Thank you, and Ms. Friedman and I just, Ms. Lowe, Ms. Friedman and I just became aware that you're going to balance the state budget, the findings to— That's why you were hired, I believe.
That's the plan.
That's right, thank you, and nice to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Stepan Portamian.
Stepan Portamian, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I have a gift to each one of you. Yes, we have. Back in April 24, 2009, our president said, "The United States of America is a far richer country because of the many Americans of Armenian descent who have contributed to our society." Today, I have 123 of those contributions, from which one could be very significant to the city of Glendale, which is back in 1967, a gentleman by the name of Paul Ignatius, who became Secretary of Navy, who was born in Glendale, California, 1920. And I chose the last individual in this book as Yervand David Lapadjian, who has a patent for system and apparatus for optimum GPC reception. And throughout this book, you will witness the automatic transmission, you will witness the color printing itself, you will witness the concrete cement mixer truck, all those things that American Armenians have contributed to our society. So here is a copy for each one of you, and I was hoping to see the city manager and the city attorney, they are not here, but I'll make sure that they'll have a copy. And I would like to—here is 13, or 12 of them, I think. And I would like to leave one copy to Margaret Hammond, so that next time when she wants to elaborate on the Armenian community, she can just go through this thing and see how since 1920, we've been in the city of Glendale, and just in 2009, somebody from the city of Glendale has done something good to humanity. Thank you very much, and I hope you will enjoy it. July 4 is coming up. This is a perfect gift for every American to witness that America is no longer a melting pot, it is just a beautiful mosaic where every ethnicity brings up a brightness to one of the stones in that mosaic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Portamian. Okay, thank you. Next is Leon Mayer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council staff. My name is Leon Mayer, and I'm here to talk about the Glendale Library and the Friends of the Library, and what we do for the melting pot of Glendale. First of all, we had a great book sale, and for those of you who didn't get there, it was fabulous. All these almost new books and famous books that have been donated by members of the Glendale community. And people were there in hordes, 50 cents a book, a dollar a book, and if you stayed till 3 o'clock on Saturday, you got to buy a bag of books for a dollar. So it was a great success, it's a book sale. Now, our summer program is still in progress, the Authors Artists and Friends Series. We just had a great program about USC, Frank Gehry, the famous architect. He was here a week or so ago. That is Barbara Eisenberg, his representative, so to speak. And we're having K. Meradian to talk about the Armenian genocide route, the story of her mother's life, her mother's family's life, called "A Gift in the Sunlight." This will be on the 9th of July, it's a week from Thursday, at the library, 7:00. Get your park over at the structure, get validated for three hours. K. Meradian, it's actually, she's a professor, it's Dr. K. Meradian, has written this book in honor of her mother, who left Armenia along the genocide route from Hadsin, Turkey, to the deserts of Syria with her and her family and friends. She's written this to honor the various Armenian families that she knows, and even the ones she doesn't know. And to do this, she not only took several trips back to the Mideast, to Turkey, to follow everything that happened there, but she spent hours and hours of research at UCLA and other libraries, looking up for the eyewitness accounts of diplomats, missionaries, and journalists who were there at the time. And this story, "A Gift in the Sunlight," is a book. She will sign and talk about her book. She will also make a slide presentation. That should be a great event. That's a week from Thursday, 7:00. Look to see you there. Now, most of you know, if you see me around, that I have these monthly, our monthly letter from the Friends, and in the last part of the booklet, you can join. So please, if you haven't joined the Friends, haven't thought about it, I always have these with me, I have them in my car, and I pass them out. And actually, talking about having things in my car, I went to Wilson Park today. Everybody knows where Wilson Park is. I went there, and I gave away these flyers about K. Meradian, and we look to have some of the old timers from Wilson Park join us a week from Thursday. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, that concludes the first portion of oral communications. What's next, please?
Next is adoption of ordinances. S. 7A is ordinance amending Sections 1.20, 010, and 2.72, 1.40, and Chapters 13.36 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 to establish additional prohibited uses of water and to eliminate percent-based water rationing requirements. This was Option 2, which was offered on June 23, 2009 by Councilmember Weaver. Day 1 is a motion directing staff to initiate code amendments to Chapter 30.47 of the code pertaining to staff authority to approve modifications to DRV-approved landscape plans for the purpose of permitting California-friendly landscaping in accordance with the water conservation ordinance.
Okay, any comments, questions from— I have questions towards the tail end of the—
Bucket Brigade.
Yeah. Ms. Friedman?
On the exemptions for the DRV-approved plans, are we going to be allowing substitution of hardscape for landscaping, or just to substitute drought-resistant plants for non-drought-resistant?
Drought-resistant plants, yeah.
Okay, so it's not going to be an excuse to all of a sudden have a giant parking lot in someone's front yard?
Not at all.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Yes.
And secondly, I had asked about whether it was wise to have an exemption for people's victory gardens for people that are growing their own food. Is that something that you think is workable in this ordinance?
It's workable. We can do that.
Okay, I just think that in this time, when there are people who are trying to save money every which way, that people that are—I think we should have a special exemption, maybe an extra day a week if we're whatever, I don't know exactly how much water they need, but for—
We can do that.
For food, for plants grown for food.
Any other questions, Mr. Najarian?
Well, I just want to make it, get a clarification on the question I raised last time about washing vehicles. And then I've heard various suggestions that the vehicle wash prohibition does not come into play until Phase 4. Can you just talk about those people, cheapskate people, who wash their cars themselves by hand as a way of therapy, difficult jobs like the city council, every weekend? What can we do? What can we not do? What suggestions and recommendations and prohibitions are there?
Okay, if you have a nice car, you can wash it. Maybe two. No, we have revised what we brought last week to allow for washing of cars with a bucket and a hose, and the hose has to have a stop nozzle on it, but it is allowed in this phase, Phase 2, correct.
And when does it become prohibited?
I believe it is Phase 4, is—
Phase 5.
Phase 5, okay, Phase 5.
Which is the most extreme—
Yes.
—level of water conservation. Okay, that's all I have for—
Can you describe Phase 5 a little, give us a few more details?
I will introduce Peter Cavounas, who will do that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As Mr. Steiger mentioned, individuals washing their own cars is prohibited on Phase 5, and Phase 5 is a phase at which, looking at landscape irrigation, this would be the extreme phase where things are really difficult. But watering would be limited to the first and third Sundays of each month, so two days a month. So we're looking at excluding the vehicle washing to the very harsh times.
Okay. And let me just add that I conducted an informal test. Over the weekend, I washed my wife's car with half a gallon in, well, I don't know, a container, regular, suppose it was half a gallon, and a quick spray with my pistol nozzle that I always use, and then sprayed it all off, dried it, et cetera. Then on Monday, yesterday, actually, I went to the car wash, and I know they used recycled water, but it was, I think I paid $13, not on the weekend, but during the week, and plus I tipped the guy that cleaned it for me. But anyway, I mean, that's a heck of a burden on people that are limited. So we definitely have to allow people to wash their cars at home, I think that's. And like Mr. Najarian says, it is excellent therapy, kind of like— And that's what my dad always told me throughout the years, and that's what I told my son when I used to make him help me wash the car. So it's a bonding process. I'm glad we're going to allow, continue to allow individual car washing in the city of Glendale. Mr. Mayor? Ms. Friedman, and then Mr. Weaver.
Over the weekend, I think probably all of us received some correspondence about swimming pools and questions about swimming pools and suggestions that maybe we prohibit the building of new pools while we're in this water crisis. I think that may be a little extreme for where we are now, but my question is, do we have or do we want to have regulations over size of pools, depth for individual pools, or require water-saving measures on pools like solar covers or other things? Is that something that you think is prudent to think about as we move forward?
Well, I can't speak to the regulation on the size of pools with length or depth. That's more of a building issue, and I'd prefer not to wade in those waters. But in terms of— In terms of covering pools, that is a highly recommended practice. We thought it was extraordinarily burdensome to mandate it, but we think that covering pools is actually proven not only to reduce evaporation, therefore the loss of water, but it also reduces someone's electric bill, because the evaporation of water has a cooling effect on the remaining water in the pool, requiring more energy to heat the pool, if it's a heated pool. So it's highly recommended, although not mandated at any phase.
Do we offer any incentives, the way we do with other water and electricity saving?
Well, we would offer a reduced water and electric bill.
That's a good point.
No, none in the form of rebates.
Okay, thank you.
The hours that you cannot water in are what?
The hours in the existing ordinance are at 10 to 5, and the modification in the ordinance that is before you is from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., consistent with others.
If your person leaves early in the morning, you get home in the summer, it's great, it's almost 7:00, and it's nice light, and the weather, it's dark at 5:00. If you can't water 6, that means if you don't water in the morning, you're going to be out there in the dark with a flashlight watering. Is that what we want?
Assuming we want people to water in the winter, yes. We thought of the—
We're in a drought, so we—
We actually, we've gone back and forth with our brethren in Burbank and Pasadena, looking for some ideas that make sense for everyone. Others, I believe Pasadena has restricted their irrigation to one day a week in the wintertime, and we thought instead of messing with which days of the week would leave it all consistent, we don't think that it's necessary for the wintertime. In terms of the irrigation time, it just seemed to make sense to pass on the hottest time of the day, which can extend into the evening. So hopefully, the morning time can—
I thought you might just say daylight saving time, 6:00, standard time, 5:00 or something, but that'd be the only thing I was curious about.
Okay, thank you. I have one, no, I'm sorry, I have two speaker cards. Mike Mohill, followed by Lydia Ray.
Did you want to include that gardens exception in the ordinance tonight? Because if you want it in the ordinance, it'd have to be, we'd have to craft the language right now and stick it in there.
What if we give you the time to work on the language, and then we can just, can we vote on that modification separately?
That'd have to come back as a separate ordinance, so you have a reintroduction and a new, but it could come back, yes. Right, take a note?
Maybe just doing it now.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Quintero, and council members. In July 2007, Mayor, then Mayor Najarian said to the public that we had a water crisis, that we all needed to conserve water. Council members, how have you personally addressed this issue? Will you make public your own water and electric bill to the public from July 07, 2007, till today? This act will let the public know that you also feel their pain and that you have shown true leadership in this crisis. I will now sit down till the end of this session, waiting for your answer. Council members, since you will not debate me according to the rules of agenda items, I will sit down and wait for your reply. This is not oral communication, and therefore I do not have to wait to the end of this council session. I plan on conserving as much water as council members since 2007. I will also match percentage of water conserved. I have a great deal of vegetation at my residence. Will the senior staff, including Mr. Starbird, be willing to take the Pepsi challenge and show the public the amount of water conserved on their part? Thank you, Mike Mohill, resident.
I thought you would address me as Ayatollah Quintero, but that's okay.
That I talk about at oral communication.
That's okay. Yeah, I'd be more than happy to disclose my water consumption. I don't have any problem at all. Lydia Ray.
Ma'am, sirs, good evening. I haven't been here for a while. Kind of ends up being the same issues. I'm happy to see the city has finally decided that, yes, we're in a drought, and yes, we probably should be doing something about it. I think that a lot of this is very good. I think some needs to be tweaked a bit, and one of the things, I think that the time change, since people kind of have figured that out, this basically looks like it's more just allowing people to do the times they've been doing, get caught, and have to pay a fine. I hope that's not the case. On the 10-minute-per-station issue, for plants to take root, they need to be watered deeply. I think it should be somehow considered that perhaps you have the same amount of time, but that, not the same amount of time, but that you can water deeply within an area. So maybe you don't do three days a week, but if you do one day a week, you could do it for 30 minutes instead of 10 minutes, because you want things to take root. You don't want to plant plants and then have the wind come along and blow them away, or you get a rain and all of a sudden they went down the hill to someone else's house. So I think those are things to be considered. I also have some concerns that there are several people in the— I also have some concerns that there are several people in the city that have been trying for years to do the right thing, and Neighborhood Services consistently has terrorized us. I think at some point, people will be paid to do what we've been doing and have been fined and have had to rip out, and I think they need to not be the people in charge. If they are, the violation should not be based on, it should be based on observed and not just reported. It should not be one neighbor saying, oh, they're doing this and they're doing this. It should be first, maybe reported, speak to those people, and then if you observe that they consistently will not comply, then that would make a little more sense because these fees are rather high, as are all the fees I consistently pay, and the other people that have tried to do the right things have paid. So I do hope these are things that you do consider. You do have people that work in the city that come from other countries that have used recycled water. I think there are many things that we can try and combine. I think that if my neighbor wants a golf course yard, if two or three of us want to have Nados and that sort of thing, we can maybe balance it out so that they get what they want and we get what we want. So these are things I think that would benefit the community in allowing us our differences and to have a house that we can fill at some point perhaps as a home, but at least it's ours, not just something we pay for and do what the neighbor who complains likes to see. So anyway, I do hope you consider all of these things. Thank you.
Thank you. And now the question is, how are we going to go about informing the Glendale residents and property owners about this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have planned a quite extensive outreach effort that we take advantage of the month of July before this ordinance becomes effective thirty days from tonight. And in that, we plan to not only send a letter to every resident, we plan to do public service announcements on GTV6, advertise with newspapers, have one of the segments, one-on-one, Mr. Steiger with Mr. Wells. We plan to have the outreach effort to various community groups and make speakers available to meet with the groups. We plan to have bill inserts, which would also be handouts that our field crews would be handing out to concerned residents, and also plan to have periodic surveys to understand how our message is being received and how well it's penetrating into the community.
Mr. Mayor, just a question. Are we going to be able to use our new phone system to call residents, the 3-1-1 system that we have in place?
We can, although I don't believe it's quite at the stage right now to where the mass notification system can be used. I imagine we're still going to be in the need of conserving water by the time the system gets up and running and is fully functional in the next month or two.
Ms. Friedman?
The speaker had raised the issues of how we sort of check on people
Yes.
and enforce. Maybe you can just speak to that.
Absolutely, and thank you for raising that. Of course, we do not intend to issue citations based on somebody simply reporting somebody else that has, that may lead to some undesirable effects. What we plan to do is take in, we have the hotline, plan to take in calls from anybody that is reporting a waste of water, inappropriate use of water, and our plan is to call back and tell the concerned customer that the water use, water waste has been reported, send them an information packet, and then the name would be added to a list that Neighborhood Services would be watching for. Neighborhood Services would only issue a citation if it was verified, a verified violation according to the code.
Okay, and the days to water are Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays.
If the ordinance is approved tonight, we would come back to council once the ordinance takes effect, and we would recommend to you phase two, which is limiting watering to Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays.
One other question. The speaker also brought up deep watering, and I do know that with new plants, especially California natives, that they do recommend a, you know, just deep watering for the first time that it's planted. Can we give that kind of an exception just for the installation? Do we have anything like that, that when you just install?
I don't believe there's anything specific there, but
Which means
Okay.
you can deep water? When you plant a new?
Well, I imagine if somebody's planting a new
Yeah.
a new garden, they would have to plant it appropriately. You know, what we're really after as a city is to curb wasteful use of water and to restrict our use on a long
So there's flexibility there, common sense.
Okay, thank you very much.
The city attorney perhaps can help address the issue that was raised about the victory gardens, or?
I saw that Councilman Najarian
I have a question on that. If we're going to exclude victory gardens, how about excluding fruit trees? And I think that's a discussion that we need to maybe save for another week and get some information on that. I mean, if the idea is that the victory garden is giving you, producing food, well, so does my citrus tree and my persimmon tree and my
Do they need to be watered more than three days a week?
Trees.
Your money tree?
Well, that's what I'd like to
Councilmember Najarian, members of council, I'm Christine Godina, Senior Assistant City Attorney. The wording that I was going to propose is that we'd add an exception for irrigation for the purpose of cultivating crops, and I would imagine that crops would include fruit trees as well as tomatoes and other types of vegetables.
Do we want to go there?
Well, I, you know, I am not, I didn't mean to open a giant can of worms, first of all, and I'm not a gardener or master gardener or anything. I just live with one. But I think just from observing my husband in his natural state, it seems that the fruit trees, that three days a week is probably fine for fruit trees. It's just some of the smaller plants like tomatoes that may occasionally, when it's very hot, need a little additional water. So I wasn't trying to throw open the floodgates of, you know, regulatory
Interesting choice of words.
intricacies, just to provide a little flexibility for people that, you know, in the hottest day of the year, maybe need to water those tomatoes that extra few minutes, that's all.
And let me ask a question. Typically, that sort of irrigation is done with a hand-by-hand. You know, you put it in a bucket or a watering can. Does our ordinance preclude you from using a watering can, you know, filling it up for a gallon or so and then going to your fruits, I mean, your vegetables or your potted geranium?
It doesn't specifically state that as an exception. It does have an exception for using, if you use low water usage sprinklers, for example, that may require more than just the ten minutes to irrigate, but as it is currently written, there's not a specific exception for hand-watering.
Well, what we can do, if I could suggest, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we can write some narrow language tonight, or we can bring that whole matter back in a couple weeks, two to three weeks, three weeks probably, would be the shortest time we can turn it around.
Well, if we're going to start getting into
Not the ordinance, just this one particular, I'm talking about
Start getting into fruit trees and so forth, then yeah, we better
My suggestion would be adopt the ordinance as it's proposed, and we would bring back that one particular
As a member
regarding gardens and trees and work that part of it out and bring it back. Just kidding. Mr. Kabounis, a heart attack.
Yeah, he was starting to feel faint. Just add one other, don't need no other can of worms either. The drip system, if you use that to get deep water into a tree, can you only drip water on those days too?
The drip system can only drip water on those days and within the approved times, but it can go for longer. It's not restricted to the ten minutes per station because of
Okay. Yeah, to get deep, it'd need to.
So will we be, I'm sorry, so if this is adopted, are you going to come back with a public education campaign as you discussed, and then an actual survey of the water usage and let us know if, number one, how many people are alleged violators and the overall water consumption, whether, well, I guess that's part of your whole plan, is then to see how we're reducing. We have a 10 percent target, correct?
Correct.
So we'll get an update on that.
Our plan is to give regular monthly updates to the commission and to the council if you would like, not only on the progress that we have on conservation, the projection on whether we're going to be paying MWD any penalties by the end of the fiscal year, along with a comparison with a prior year and comparison of habits allowing for weather.
So there's two things that could happen. Phase two that we're going to be entering might not meet our 10 percent reduction, but also MWD might further require a greater reduction. Could they not? Or is that just a yearly thing that they
MWD is committed to this phase four, the fiscal year that we're in.
So we're good for this fiscal year?
Correct.
So you'll just be coming back and letting us know how we're doing with our
Yes.
our water conservation? Okay.
Ms. Friedman?
Just gonna, rather than wait, I'm going to just address Mr. Mohill now, although I think he left the room. Did he leave the room? Oh, well.
So rude.
It's gonna be bad.
Never mind.
Were you going to disclose your water saving?
I was going to offer to, but
Well, why don't you anyway?
Well, just, I'm happy to
For the sake of the folks at home and
I'm happy to bring my water bill in next week to show, and I was going to suggest to Mr. Mohill that he not peg his water usage to mine, especially by the square foot, because we have an 18,000-square-foot lot, and it's almost completely zero escape with the exception of a vegetable garden. We do not water. In the heat of the summer, maybe once a month, we will spot water certain plants, but we allow our natives to go fallow, and we use very little water in the home. And we do actually capture water that we use in the sink and use it for our potted plants and do a lot of other water-reducing methods. So between water and power, we did the GWP's power audit, water audit, which they offer to every resident. Fascinating, they actually suck air out of your home, and it's a really incredible thing that they do.
Do that here.
And when they looked at our bill, they, the guy, the guy said some, the man said something like, oh, we didn't think anyone was living here. So I'm very proud of our energy consumption and conservation, and I'm happy to make that public to anybody who wants to see it.
And I was a number-one conservationist on the council until Ms. Friedman obviously has beat me, but I'm sure I'll be a strong number two.
Would you like a motion?
Mr. Drayman.
I don't know, Mr. Quintero. Remember, I live alone.
Oh, you're right, yeah, you live in
So it's just me. When I round up everybody in my household to do a conservation program, it's just me looking in the mirror. And so it's pretty much leave in the morning, come back late at night, go to bed, only a couple of stops for shaving, showering, and brushing teeth in between, so. Anyway, so unfortunately, Mr. Mohill, I will not be able to invite you over for tea because I don't use water to make tea. So, no, I don't think you'll find any water wasters in my house.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Najarian?
Well, I do use a few water conservation techniques. Our pool is covered to reduce evaporation. I do wash my car in the manner Mr. Quintero stated, but I pull it up on the front lawn, my brown front lawn. I use a bucket in the shower and take the gray water out to throw on the plants, but I am public enemy number one in my house now, let me tell you. I keep scaring my kids, and I tell them that you better save water, or Mr. Barry Allen and Mr., or Mr. Mike Mohill are going to be peeking over and watching our water meter dance around. So we're working on cutting down their shower time, and my wife suggested I should wash the dishes if I want to continue water conservation, but we're still working on that one. But it's a challenge, and I encourage everyone in Glendale to try their best. We are going to be changing our lifestyles and the way that we irrigate our lawns and our gardens and the way we use water in our homes. I pray to God that we do get some rain in the next fiscal year. Mr. Kabounis, thank you.
Hey, thank you. All right, I think the ordinance is
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just quickly before it's introduced, there was just one minor amendment. I provided it all to all of you, having to do with the exemption for DRB-approved plans. It's just clarifying that the exemption only applies if you got the DRB approval or other planning approval prior to the date that the council adopts a resolution adopting a mandatory phase of conservation. So that's before you. If I just ask that the mayor of the motion include that in his or her motion.
Move 7A with that modification.
Okay, could I have a second?
There's a second.
And a roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Now we have to move 7A1. Move 7A1.
Is there a second? I have a second.
Second.
Councilmembers, Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Next, please.
The date is action items. At 8/8, City Manager regarding consideration of contract renewal with David Church and Associates for professional federal strategic planning legislative representation, intergovernmental liaison, and political analysis services. At 8/8, one is a motion authorizing the renewal of the city's federal lobbyist contract with the firm of David Church and Associates with no increase in fees.
Okay, once again, let me make clear that you have to turn in your speaker cards for the action items that are coming up. Turn in your speaker cards to the city clerk, please. Ms. Spears?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we have a report before you that John Tectallian is going to cover, but in brief, this is, the staff is requesting renewal of our professional services agreement with David Church and Associates for federal legislative advocacy services not to exceed $88,000, and we've been working with Church and Associates since 2003, and I will have John Tectallian go through the report for you.
Mr. Mayor, Quintero, members of council, as Ms. Spears mentioned, since 2003, council approved a contract with David Church and Associates for federal legislative advocacy services. Based upon the existing contract's provisions, this contract is presented to the city council on an annual basis for reauthorization. Over the last six years, David Church and Associates has assisted the city in securing over $5.8 million in federal funding through the federal appropriations process. In 2009 alone, the city received earmarks totaling $1.5 million, and those two were $500,000 for the inter-agency communications interoperability system that are known as ISIS, and $1 million for the Glendale Police Department's regional DNA laboratory. In March of 2009, David Church and Associates planned, organized, and scheduled a trip to Washington for city staff to meet with federal legislators. The delegation met with Congressman Adam Schiff and the offices of Senator Feinstein, Barbara Boxer, and Barbara Boxer to discuss the city's fiscal year 2010 project submittals. Staff also met with members of the staff for the Senate Environmental Works Committee to discuss Glendale's positioning with respect to the reauthorization of Safety Lou, and we also met with the offices of the justice programs to discuss a series of grants the city had applied for and approved, and had been approved through the burn discretionary grants program. Preliminary, congressmen Schiff, as a result of those meetings, has indicated that he secured approximately $1 million in earmarks. $500,000 of that would be for the Glendale-Foothill Regional Forensic DNA Lab, which is the same project that he secured $1 million for last year, as well as $500,000 additionally for ISIS. The funding is currently working its way through the legislative process, and we should know about the final numbers sometime in fall of 2009. David Church and Associates has continued to be responsive to Glendale staff's request for research and information, and the city has benefited from the established network with elected and appointed officials. Staff proposes to continue the services at the current contract rate, which will not exceed $88,000. The contract will be for a 12-month period ending in June 2009, at which time we will come back and ask for council's reconsideration. David Church is here in the audience if there are any questions for him from the council.
Okay, I have two speaker cards. One will be here from the public, Barry Allen, followed by Mike Mohill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, of course, the public. I'm Barry Allen. It looks like Mr. Church has done an excellent job for the city. I think certainly much better than the city had been able to show that it's been able, was able to do for itself in the past. I just have one question, and that is that with the number of other cities and municipalities that the David Church represents, what would happen if there was a conflict of interest where, for instance, locally, another city that they represented wanted the DNA lab and Glendale did? How would that be handled? Thank you. I'm Barry Allen.
Okay, the next speaker is Mike Mohill. Okay, the next speaker is Mike Mohill.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I have nothing to say. I just filled out the card to preserve my constitutional right. Should I need to say anything on this matter later? Thank you.
Okay, those are the two speakers. What does the feeling of the city council on...
You want a motion?
Can I ask the question about conflict of interest? I think it's a good question. How does that work if they're representing, if the lobbyists is representing other cities in the area?
Better ask Mr. Church.
I think at this time, it'd be good for Mr. Church to come on up and maybe answer that question.
He flew out from Washington, so...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm always delighted to be here, so thank you for listening to me. Conflict of interest is a, we're a dominant firm in the Los Angeles basin, as you know. We rarely encounter a conflict of interest. I cannot think of a time when there was a competing interest from one of our client cities as opposed to another, and very frequently, as we do here, we have client cities that are really adjacent to each other. As you know, we also have Burbank, La Cañada, Flint Ridge, if I go down Highway 10 to the east, people like Ontario, Chino, Norco, Rancho Cucamonga, these are all adjoining. Representing some of those cities in excess of a decade, I can't think of a time. We do, however, since the inception of the firm, for more than 20 years, have a formal written policy about conflicts. Mostly, it addresses private sector clients, but when we first detect the time when there could be the appearance of a conflict, not a conflict, but a possible appearance, we will notify you in writing, and when we send you that written statement, we will tell you what we intend to do about it. So if we think there's a chance at some point we'll choose sides, we'll tell you which side we're going to take at that time. I can't recall the last time I've written one of those letters.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can also add to Mr. Church's comments. As an example, the Regional Forensic DNA Laboratory is one where we worked in conjunction with Pasadena and Burbank and asked for these monies as a regional group. And so oftentimes, if there may be items that are of like interest, we work with other entities to make sure that we have a stronger hold possibly on the monies as well. So just to add on to what Mr. Church was saying.
Thank you.
All right, well, Mr. Drayman, you can have a seat, Mr. Drayman.
Oh, actually, I have a question for Mr. Church. I'm sorry, you went through the list very quickly. Burbank, La Cañada, Flint Ridge, seriously, Rancho Cucamonga.
The whole client list from the Southern California basin?
No, I don't think you listed the whole client basin.
No, I didn't.
Southern California basement. Basin, I'm just asking you about the ones you mentioned. Burbank, La Cañada, Flint Ridge, Rancho Cucamonga, did you say Norco?
Well, yeah, I was using them as examples for cities that are adjacent to each other and share boundaries where there'd be the most opportunity. I think in that area, I was saying Ontario, Chino, Norco.
Well, what other cities are you currently working for, besides Glendale? Is La Cañada, Flint Ridge one of them?
Yes.
And Burbank?
Yes.
And Rancho Cucamonga?
Yes.
And Norco?
Yes.
And Ontario?
Yes.
So the answer just is yes?
Yes.
When I asked the question? Okay, it wasn't meant to be a trick question. I just wanted to make sure I heard, got the list you were elaborating on.
That's not an inclusive list.
So, oh, I'm sure, I'm sure. Well, I guess what, I guess when we talk about the DNA lab, Mr. Church, and then I begin to wonder what role in that Mr. Schiff had.
Substantial.
Because the way it was presented was that you paved the way for him, and then he went in and snagged it for us.
We work very, I'm not an elected official, and we're dependent upon elected officials, both to the House and the Senate. And we work very closely with them to ident, well, first, the process really begins by working very closely with you to identify your requests on behalf of the citizens of this community and their needs. And then we work with you to figure out a plan about how we can meet those needs. And then we take those needs and the plans to people within the legislative branch and promote them as best we can. We deal with Mr. Schiff, but in addition to that, we'll do the background works that we can present this in the best possible light. We'll identify the individual line item within a bill, making it so much easier.
If I may interrupt?
Sure.
Because it's just going on and on. I wasn't asking you to tell me how the process of a lobbyist works.
Okay.
I understand perfectly how it works. What I'm asking is, the way it was presented was that you cleared the way, and then Mr. Schiff somehow just happened to get the DNA lab. I guess what I'm trying to say is, with these other cities, Burbank, La Cañada, Flint Ridge, Rancho Cucamonga, Norco, Ontario, some of these other cities, do we have any material that shows the comparisons of what you may have brought for them? We had some, what were the numbers, Mr. Tectalian? I think...
5.8 million.
Five, what was it?
5.8?
Yeah.
That was 5.8 million over the last six years.
Over the last six years, and then the regional DNA lab. In other words, what are the comparables for Burbank and La Cañada, Flint Ridge, and Rancho Cucamonga, Norco, and Ontario? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Uh-huh.
Not how the process of a lobbyist works.
I don't know.
Neither do I.
But they have vastly different requests, so...
I'm sure.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, for myself, I would like to go for, I guess what could be called option two, and to have the staff release a request for qualifications for the federal advocacy services, and to have the David Church and Associates firm also submit a RFQ. So that's my inclination.
I would support that and invite Mr. Church to be a part of that.
Another Mr. Najarian.
I have been to Washington several times and have been guided through the halls of Congress, literally by Mr. Church, and had the doors opened, literally, to different It's, I mean, this is a, when you say request, this is a difficult thing that we're trying to quantify or to qualify here. A lot of the advantages that we can get from a lobbyist, number one, relates to the type of assistance we need, and then also relates to the type of legislation that's out there, the bills that are being passed, and the personal relationships that are developed between the lobbyist and others. And one sticks out in my mind, and that's with James Oberstarr, who's the chairman of the House Transportation and, it's Transportation and something else, isn't it?
Infrastructure.
Transportation Infrastructure Committee. I'm not sure what we would be looking for if we were to hold this out for a request for qualifications. Would we ask for other cities and ask, look to see what sort of funding that their lobbyist has gotten them? I'm not sure we can compare that. I think the important thing here is that we have a certain level of comfort with Church and Associates, and that they have brought some success. Is it the greatest success possible? That's unknown. I don't know if anyone could answer that question. But we certainly haven't been, have been shut down. Over the last six years, we have had a pretty good response. Then there's the whole issue that we had with our state, I think we did this for our state lobbyists, to be, not too long ago, and I think there's a, if I'm, at least on the state level, we learned that there's a gentleman's agreement between lobbying firms, and that if an incumbent lobbyist is still interested in representing a client, the other potential lobbyists are hesitant to apply and to get into the mix. Out of respect, like I said, I think it's an unwritten agreement. So, I mean, I'm happy with Church and Associates in every way. I know that some of you have been down to Washington, some have not, but at least someone who's been there, you know, at ground zero for the lobbying efforts, I mean, they, I think they do their job. Adam Schiff definitely cast the vote for that crime lab, but I was, you know, I was in that meeting. That was a year ago last March, and it's a team effort. It's not just Mr. Church. Clearly, we can't hang the accolades solely around his neck, but we had staff, we had Ron Edie, Ray Edie with us, we had the fire department, myself, John, was there any other council? Public Works was with us. So when we say, when we consider the option of putting it out for a request for qualifications, I think we need to take a step back and think about things that we're looking for and what perhaps better results we could be looking for from our lobbyists. Because I'm very satisfied with what we've been doing with Mr. Church and what he's been doing for us.
Mr. Mayor? Well, I'm willing to do just that, to think about what it is that we're looking for in a lobbyist. As to the issue of the RFQ, we went out for an RFQ originally, and so I don't think we'd have any going out again, and Mr. Church could lay out for us what his game plan is. There's a new administration, a new Congress, so I don't think, yeah, new parties in power. I don't think it's just sort of, you know, the same old thing. So I'm prepared, like I say, I'm prepared to support, I mean, obviously, letting his company also apply for going out and getting ideas and seeing what else is out there. Mr. Weaver?
My dealings with Mr. Church have been very good. I think he's done a great job back there. I used to deal with Washington for 20, 30 years when I was dealing with the budgets for the Corps of Engineers. I know the kind of job that he does, and my mind is very appreciative. Just to find out where we do stand, I'd like to move 8A1 and see what the vote is.
Before we...
Second.
Okay, if we have a...
That's to renew.
Freedman hasn't had a chance to make a comment, but okay, we'll have a roll call.
Councilmember Drayman?
No.
Freedman?
No.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
No. Okay, by three to two, looks like we'll be directing the staff to release a request for qualifications, and once again, Mr. Church and his company is certainly going to be able to apply and convince us that he's the right person for the job. Do I have a motion for number two?
Yes, I'll move, I'll move whatever we call, option two, is that we're calling?
Yeah, I think it would just be motion option two in the report, because there's no separate motion for that.
I need a second. Any other comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Drayman?
Yes.
Freedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Quintero?
Yes. Next, please.
That's at 8B, is City Manager regarding request for the, from the Kiwanis Club of Glendale for co-sponsorship of the 5th Annual Kiwanis Incredible Duck Splash. P1 is a motion cosponsoring the 5th Annual Kiwanis Incredible Duck Splash.
Ms. Spears?
In this report, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we are asking to adopt a motion to cosponsor the 5th Annual Kiwanis Incredible Duck Splash, which will be held at Verdugo Park in October of this year. John Tectalian has specifics, if you're so interested.
Before, here from Mr. Tectalian, this very important issue, we have two speakers. Barry Allen, followed by Mike Mohill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, and of course, the public. I'm Barry Allen. Just one question on this. I see the fire department is going to be providing the water. I want to know if that's going to be recycled water or potable water, and my suggestion would be certainly to bring in recycled water, because they're going to recycle it again anyways. But from what I've seen on that, and I think it's certainly a very good cause. Thank you, Barry Allen.
Okay, if we can get that question answered, we will. Let's wait till we hear from the second speaker, Chief, Mike Mohill.
Mike Mohill is outside.
Done, so, Chief, can you answer, that'll close the public comment. Chief, can you answer that question?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. The answer to that question is yes. We're going to be using the water that is in our water tenders currently. It's 2,000 GPMs in each of the water tenders. We're going to pump them in for the duck splash, and then when the duck splash is over, we're going to put the waters back into, the water back into the water tenders. So we will be recycling the water.
Okay, great. This is a wonderful event, lot of fun, the kids particularly enjoy it, and it sure raises an awful lot of money, so I'm looking forward to it. Do we have a motion to...
So I'm...
Second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Drayman?
Yes.
Freedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Next, please.
At ETS Fire Chief regarding Verdugo Fire Communications Dispatch Center at C1 is a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a joint fire communications system agreement between the cities of Burbank, Glendale, and Pasadena.
Spears?
Mr. Mayor, I will go directly to our Fire Chief, Scoggins.
Good evening, once again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. What we have been working on for the past year is working through our tri-city agreement for the Verdugo Fire Communication Center. The three fire chiefs, along with representatives from the three city attorney's office, finance, along with city managers, have been focusing on a few different points here. The number-one point that we wanted to clear up was our governance of the center. The Verdugo Dispatch Center has been in service and operation for 30 years now. We're in our 30th year of service, and we have updated the agreement three times over that period of time. We started off in 1979 with an agreement, in 1984, we had an update, and in 1992, and that was our last update. But a lot has changed with Verdugo since that time, and there were some things that we needed to address over that period of time. We didn't have any contract cities the last time we updated that agreement. Our costing formula was another big piece of the conversation, the financing and things we needed to address there. We had a process that didn't create a fair, equitable distribution of the costs in the center. And also, we needed to create a technology plan and a way to fund that technology plan. And the agreement has addressed all four of these issues, which are really significant for the future of Verdugo Dispatch. And at the end of the day, with all the work that's been done there, it's actually going to save the city of Glendale about $27,000 with the restructured format, and it's gonna, it has a plan in place to carry us well into the future with that center. Just for, you know, some stats, Verdugo Dispatch is for close to a million people, close to 130 square miles, for 12 cities, 43 fire stations for fire and EMS calls in those communities.
I have two speaker cards. Barry Allen, followed by Mike Mohill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, and of course, the public. I'm Barry Allen. It's certainly good to see that finally we're going to have some business-like actions taken in that area of the fire department or the enterprise account. Fortunately, the performance audit was conducted by people who were not part of the fire department, and they did identify the areas that now we're seeing that we're going to have some management expertise put into, the form of governance, the performance, and other factors that will finally be used. That just shows that each of these departments needs oversight. They can't be left alone. Thank you, Barry Allen.
Mike Mohill? Mike Moehl.
Mr. Mayor, council members, please chief Skoggins, thank you very much for your work. In your moment. Excuse me, okay. I really have nothing to add. I just want to reserve my constitutional right to say something in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I suggest, maybe you could incorporate in your rules that if someone doesn't want to speak, they can just say pass from the audience, rather than explain themselves. And we'll understand that they submitted a card and that they didn't want to speak.
Kind of takes away all the fun of coming to a podium. But, yeah, we can reserve the right to do that under the Constitution of the United States.
Do you want a motion?
Okay, are there any comments or questions? Okay, yeah, I'd like a motion.
We'd see one.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Strayman.
Yes.
Breedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
At 8D is general manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding perform an asset optimization study. At D1 is motion authorizing city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Pace Global Energy Services, Inc., for a total amount of $183,100, including contingency.
Ms. Spears.
Mr. Mayor, I'll go to Glenn Steiger, GWP director.
Mayor Quintero, members of the Glendale City Council. You may remember, excuse me, council, Councilman Friedman, you may not remember, but on March 3rd, GWP presented its five-year strategic plan. As part of that strategic plan, one of our key result areas is that of power supply. Initiatives within that was to take a look at how we are moving forward in terms of our existing and future generation assets and purchase power. Most significantly, what we intend to do with our Grayson generation facility. What we are going to present tonight is an asset optimization study to look at not only moving forward with Grayson, but also how renewables and other generation and power supply assets will integrate with our future portfolio. And I'd like to introduce Steve Lins, our assistant general manager of power supply, to explain some of the details.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Steve Lins, assistant general manager of supply. How you doing? As Mr. Steiger mentioned, some of the key strategic initiatives of our strategic plan were to figure out how to supply reliable power to the city under severe regulatory and legislative controls. And at the same time, how to optimize our portfolio, including modernizing Grayson Power Plant and including the renewable energy resources that are going to be required by state mandates. And doing all of this, we have to do it with an eye on trying to control our rates. Because once again, one of our key strategic initiatives is to try to reduce our rates to the citizens of Glendale. The study that we're looking at doing with Pace is an optimization study. Pace will be building a stochastic model. And that stochastic model is going to be used to help us make decisions on optimizing our assets. The model will input our system constraints. They'll attempt to input where we think legislation is going on greenhouse gas, both on the federal level and the state level. And we'll use the output of that model to try to make decisions on optimizing our assets. Some of the decisions that we'll be trying to make based on the model are going to be things related to what types of new units do we put at Grayson? What's the optimal renewable portfolio? And how do we time scaling those various resources into our system over the regulatory timeframe that we may be looking at? In addition, we're looking at ownership of assets, renewables, versus just buying power purchase agreements. We're here just not too long ago where we bought a power purchase agreement for a small hydro project. That was Tiotin. In that case, that was, that was all that was available. But in many cases, we prefer ownership because after you get past the first 20 years, you get the rest of it for very low cost. The configuration of Grayson Power Plant as it relates to burning Shoal Canyon landfill gas is a big issue that we're trying to resolve with this model. And finally, transmission requirements that we'll need for all the resources. GWP got five proposals, and we evaluated them in three areas: experience, strength of team, and cost. Costs were in the range of $120,000 to $225,000. Pace received the overall highest evaluated ranking. And the cost of their proposal is $152,500. So I think on the agenda, it actually says $183,100. The total is $152,500 plus a 20% retention, which is at 183 even. So we would recommend that you authorize a contract with Pace to perform the study. Any questions?
Excuse me. You've done a very good job in your analysis, along with Mr. Steiger. I have three speakers. Barry Allen, followed by Aram Kazazian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff. I'm Barry Allen. Excuse me. Once again, I have to comment on this report. I think that the GWP has shown its expertise in turning out reports like this. It's something, it's very easy to follow. It's understandable. And it certainly puts weight on the proper scales. Later on this evening, you're going to see another similar report. And it certainly doesn't, doesn't show the value that this one does. Thank you, Barry Allen.
Aram Kazazian, followed by Mike Moehl.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me opportunity to speak for this item. Mayor Quintero, my name is Aram Kazazian. I started reviewing this a couple of days ago. And I have some questions. As I'm trying to gather out of this what's going on here, as 20, year of 2014, we're going to be reducing our power rates down. And that's when the, what do you call, the power plant, the Shoal Canyon gas contract expires. Now, is that what we're trying to do? Or we're trying to renegotiate this contract, maybe now to bring it down? Or I have some gut feeling that we're trying to do something different that's going to cost the city more money. I'm not sure what's going on in here. 20, year 2014 is where our contract expires. Now, I have a feeling that we're going to try to renegotiate it or trying to get out of the contract. I'd like to get some answers on that. Are we trying to get out of this contract now? Because we're paying a lot more money for the Shoal Canyon gas right now because our contract sums are pretty high. I don't know if you understand what I'm saying. Right now, the rate we're paying for the, for the gas to run the turbines is pretty high. Because that was done 15 years ago. 15 years ago, we paid a higher rate. Now, 15 years later, we still have five more years to go. Maybe we should try to renegotiate to bring those rates down and bring it cheaper, cheaper gas so we can reduce our rates now. That might be better, better way to go. If we extend the contract now to three years, we can reduce our rates now instead of waiting for the year 2014. And then we have to run that, that plant. And I don't know if we do have the expertise to run that plant or not. Is this what we're trying to get Pace to give us an answer on? I'm kind of, I'm kind of confused in this matter. So I'd like to, you know, the council to really, before they issue this contract, study a little bit more or have a ad hoc committee to study more, see what could be done before we spend another $200,000 of our taxpayers' money. I'm kind of worried about that. Another, another thing is why aren't we getting a firm that's local or somewhere close by that can, we can keep our money in, in the state of California rather than out of the state of California? That's another concern I have. So I appreciate if you look into that and maybe give a little more time to study this matter. I do have some concerns on that this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll have your questions answered after the next speaker, Mike Moehl.
Mike Moehl, Mr. Mayor, city council members. Had I not put in my card, I wouldn't be able to talk about this subject matter. The issue came out with Shoal Canyon. I live in the Shoal Canyon area. And we're talking about conservation up there and usage of gas. I remember former Councilman Bob Giuseppe talked about gasification up there. Are we going, looking into that program rather than let the, the dump site grow higher? I don't know. Again, we're talking about Shoal Canyon. I wasn't planning to talk about it, but I reserved my constitutional right, thank you, to talk about it.
Do you have an answer to the questions raised?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, on Shoal Canyon, we're looking at a wide range of alternatives. One includes trying to renegotiate the price on the gas that we're getting from the canyon. Another includes putting new, more efficient units up there that are so efficient that they, they more than pay for themselves over time and actually bring rates down. Shoal Canyon is, is just one of, a long list of resources that this model is going to help us look at, including all of our outside SCAPR resources, Grayson Power Plant, our transmission outside the city. So Shoal is just one very small part of this study. The study addresses all of our assets and optimizing the entire system.
How was this firm chosen or others?
The firm was chosen by putting out an RFP to all the companies that we're aware of that do this type of work. Pace, in fact, just finished doing an extensive 20-year integrated resource plan for Pasadena. We were extremely impressed with it. So we put out our feelers and got five responses from firms that were qualified, and we rated them on the criteria that I described to you.
Okay. Mr. Drayman.
The other part. Oh, council member, here.
Thank you, Mr. Lins. The other part of the question Mr. Kazazian asked was about why aren't we negotiating, trying to negotiate rates down?
I think he, I thought he asked about why aren't we trying to negotiate Shoal Canyon prices down? And as I mentioned when I started my answer, we are, we are doing that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, gasification or the, well, or plasma or whatever it is, the waste-to-energy concept.
Pardon me?
Waste-to-energy concepts, whether we're pursuing or interested in, in those technologies.
We, Glendale Water and Power is primarily focused on how to burn the gas that comes out of the landfill. We are kind of doing a survey of available waste-to-energy projects. But we've kind of agreed with Public Works that they're going to be taking the lead on looking at waste-to-energy or trash-burning technologies and, and testing that with the county, I think, as a partner and figuring out where we may be able to go with that technology. But GWP is focusing primarily on...
Right.
What's the most efficient way to burn the landfill gas that we're currently getting out of the landfill?
It's coming out of Public Works rather than Glendale Water and Power.
The trash-burning, I believe, effort is, yes.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments? Have a motion?
Move 8D1.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Strayman.
Yes.
Breedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
At E2 is director of Public Works regarding parking facilities property management contract for the city parking structures and the Glendale Transportation Center. At E1 is motion authorizing city manager to execute a 36-month agreement with two one-year extension options with Parking Concepts, Inc., for a total contract cost not to exceed At E2 is a motion authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment with Parking Concepts, Inc., for the parking facing facilities property management contract to extend the term of the agreement for a three-month period in an amount not to exceed $465,000.
Ms. Spears.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'd like to ask John Obekdania, Traffic and Transportation Administrator, to take you through the report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, just to give you a quick background on this process that we went through for the selection of the contractor for the operation of cities' parking, parking facilities are Glendale Transportation Center. In February last year, we issued an RFP for the facility management of these facilities in the city. We received six proposals from companies that are in the business of operating parking facilities and full, full-service companies. These companies were scored based on their qualification. We had an outside panel in addition to staff. And based on that scoring, we had three of the top companies. Modern Parking was ranked the highest in terms of overall ranking. Parking Concepts was hired second, was ranked second, and Central Parking was ranked third. There was a cost difference of approximately half a million dollars between the cost proposal from Modern Parking and PCI, which was the second-ranked company. We came back to city council in June of, June 24 of 2008. Given that there were some ambiguities in the Modern Parking cost proposal, we had, we recommended city council that we negotiate, we get authorization to negotiate with both Modern and PCI. We get a best and final offer from either one of them. The city council, after deliberation, receiving input from the companies that were present here, directed staff to only negotiate with Modern, verify their numbers, which we did. And we brought a staff report back to council in February. At the February meeting, after input from the existing operators, receiving staff, staff presentation, city council was split essentially on who to choose as far as for this contract. And that item was postponed to the March 3 meeting of city council. At that, at that meeting, after, again, receiving information from staff, receiving input from the three operators, Modern, PCI, and Central Parking, council directed staff to issue a supplemental RFP. Essentially deemed the three companies out of the six to be the most qualified and to issue an RFP, essentially getting a best and final offer from these three companies. We did issue the RFP. We made a number of modifications to the RFP to ensure that the level of insurance that we're seeking, based on input from city attorney's office, went from $1 million to $2 million. We made sure that some of the elevator maintenance costs were all, all-inclusive and included in terms of their cost proposal. We made clarification to the security services in terms of the hourly wages, whether it was overtime or during special event, that we pay as one hourly rate. And there were some minimum salary ranges set up for the management of the companies that will be managing our operations because we did not want to get a low-level manager at a very low cost that would have a problem with our operations. And we established a certain percentage benefit for the employees. As you may know, this is a union contract. There are employees that are currently operating in our, in our facilities that are all union. Based on the cost proposals we received, PCI's cost proposal was the lowest. Modern's cost proposal was the second lowest. And Central Parking was the third lowest. The numbers are in the staff report. The difference between Modern and PCI is $200,000. Essentially, PCI's number is $200,000 lower than the cost proposal from Modern. Based on the cost proposal, essentially, that was what we were looking for, to get the best and final offer. Staff has prepared two motions for your consideration. Essentially, the first motion is to award a contract to Modern Parking, I'm sorry, Parking Concepts Incorporated. They've been our operator for the last 10 years, and they have gone through this process twice, and we have selected them in the past. They're a reputable operator in the, in this region. The second motion, because of the process taking longer than we anticipated, is to extend the existing contract with PCI for a period of three months, basically bringing them to June 30. We've been extending it on a month-to-month basis so that they will begin operation as of July 1 with the new contract. There will be no change in the operation. Essentially, everything will stay the same. So, Mr. Chairman, there's a lot more numbers and details that are in the staff report. I will be happy to answer any of those questions. But we followed the process that was directed by city council to us. And we're presenting to you a cost proposal that is the lowest in terms of value for the operation of the facilities. And on behalf... the facilities and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have a question. Had Modern Concepts gotten the contract, who were a little bitter originally, in a timely fashion, have you figured out how much money the city would have saved with their proposal? Because we've been paying the current operator a rate which was considerably more than Modern, than Modern suggested. So have you figured out how much money it's cost the city? I'm sure it had to have been hundreds of thousands of dollars. Do you have that number? And if you don't, maybe one of your staff can try to crunch some.
I just want to clarify, you said Modern Concepts.
Or whatever it's called, Modern Parking.
You mean Modern Parking or, because you sort of mixed.
I'm sorry, Modern Parking.
Hybrid.
Yeah, Modern, yeah.
Fifth company as in.
When they merged, that'll be the name. Modern Parking, had we, you know, had they taken over the, the parking management, whenever it was that they would have been, you know, taking it over, they were so much lower than Parking Concepts, the current operator. I just wonder how much money we would have saved to date. Never mind going into the future, how much would we have saved to date? Because I think it would have been a, quite a large amount of money. But anyway, you don't have to answer that right now, but if someone in the staff can kind of figure that out, that would be interesting to me.
Mr. Mayor, if I can answer it in a different way, although that, we, we will try to come up with a figure. The current PCI's extensions that we had, their contract which expires June 30, they did not, they agreed to keep their same rate in their, under the previous contract. So currently, their contract is about $4.6 million. Modern's contract.
But Mr. Obegdania, that's what I'm saying. Their current rate, wasn't their current, the last contract, that rate, wasn't it much higher than what Modern was proposing?
No.
It was the same?
Yeah. That's what I was trying to answer.
Yeah.
Their annual contract, the three-year contract with PCI is $4.6 million approximately. The Modern contract that Council considered at the time was $4.9 million. So if you just look at it and when we went to, in February, if we had selected Modern, if you just looked at a three-year contract, there are changes in the contract, there were changes in the wages, but the difference right there is about $300,000. So what, if we just continue with PCI right now for several more months, their cost is 4.6 versus Modern's 4.9. I'll give you another figure. Modern's cost proposal in February was $4.9 million. Their current proposal is $5.1 million. So their cost went up about $200,000 under this goal. PCI's proposal in February was 385, their cost went down $384,000. So what, what Modern did under the new cost proposal process, their prices went up $184,000. PCI cut their prices $384,000. So at the end of the day, if we had chosen Modern at the time and selected them, and you look at the PCI's current proposal that we're presenting to City Council, PCI price is $21,000 cheaper. I have a chart if it's confusing because as I said, there are many numbers.
No, no, no.
But if you look at, if we had chosen Modern at the time in February, 4.9 was their approximately their cost proposal. PCI has cut their prices $21,000 less than what Modern proposed at the time. Again, they cut their prices, Modern increased their prices. One of the reasons Modern prices have gone up was, if you recall, there was discussion of other security costs that they were subsidizing. And that was our concern. They were subsidizing the security costs they were operating. Instead of, their, their price was $14 an hour per employee, they were, they proposed $11.25, so they were subsidizing the difference. So there's about $200,000 increase that, and their discount proposal, Modern selected to not subsidize it anymore. So the difference right here, when you see $200,000 difference between PCI and Modern, exactly you can amount, part of it is amounted because of that security cost change.
Wow.
Essentially, what we're after as far as qualification of either one of these companies, they're all qualified. The difference has come down to price. We've looked at it every which way you can think of as far as whether it was the prices in February, whether it's the prices now, you still have about a $200,000 difference.
I noticed in the Table 1 that Modern is charging more for maintenance services, they're charging more for engineering services. Parking Concepts is charging $55,000 less for maintenance and $98,000 less for engineering. What does that mean? What are maintenance services and engineering services? Parking Concepts is $153,000 less than Modern. What is maintenance and engineering?
Mr. Mayor, it deals with the, they have subcontractors, each one of them, they get cost proposals from subcontractors that are operating. They're doing sweeping, they're doing elevator maintenance, they're doing electrical services, they're doing pressure washing in the, in the city. We have CCTV cameras if they have to maintain those. We have the elevators. We have parking control, revenue control access equipment. All of those are subcontracted to each. So depending on the number of contracts they have with their subcontractors, if you can look at all of them across the board, yes, there is a slight differences. We look at the total cost, that the bottom line is where, where the total cost difference comes out. Some is higher, some, some is lower. What we've done in this contract was what we call a pass-through contract. In other words, although they may put in, let's say, $252,000 for maintenance services, they have to invoice us, they have to show us that they actually spend the $250,000. If they did not spend that amount of money, regardless who the contractor is, they are not going to be paid. So they, every single service that they contract out, they have to show us an invoice. They have to show us an invoice for all their wages and benefits that they pay to their labor. And that's what's written in our contract. So at any time, if they don't spend that amount of money, they're not going to entitled, be entitled to it. So we will keep that saving and we use it in case there's some increase in the operation of the facility in some other areas.
Well, no, it's just that the issue for me is if, if they're spending $55,000 less in maintenance and 50,000, or $98,000 less in engineering, you don't think that's significant? I mean, you think they'll still, we can still retain the same amount of safety and, and cleanliness and so forth?
Mr. Mayor, we have set some thresholds for the operation. Every facility has to be, let's say, pressure washed a certain number of times. Every facility has to be cleaned. There are certain level of maintenance that is required from all the contractors. So it basically boils down to the wages that they have to pay and the level of difference in terms of the cost that each competitor subcontractor is providing. Otherwise, we have that level of, that level of service that's required by all of them. And depending on who they use, there's a difference in cost. But the quality and the level of service and the frequency of service does not change in all of them.
Okay. Those are all the questions at this point. Do you have questions from Mr. Obegdania?
I'm going to wait till after. I have my questions for Mr. Obegdania.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation. We have a number of speaker cards. Start with Barry Allen, followed by Robert Hindle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council staff, public. I'm Barry Allen. Just a couple of easy questions. There's no provision for contingent fees and there's no provision for change orders. I see that. I, I also question what the assigned costs are. And I don't see insurance in here. It's got to be put in somewhere, especially when the insurance requirement was changed from $1 million to $2 million plus fidelity insurance. And the, the breakdown without seeing the original RFP and being able to see the proposals as they came in, you're at a same loss that the public is in not understanding the amount or type of security, whether it's armed or unarmed, what it really is. Is it physical security? Is it electronic security? We've heard what maintenance includes besides maintaining the elevators, but maintenance as well and, and steam cleaning the garage floors and things like that. I think we really need to see what some of those issues are because of, as Mayor Quintero pointed out, there are a lot of discrepancies in numbers from one to the other in comparing those particular numbers. And, you know, are they, for instance, do they steam clean on their own or do they subcontract that? We see a, a total, monthly contractors subtotal, but we don't see a monthly subcontractors subtotal. And I think, I think that's something that this council should request. Thank you, Barry Allen.
Thank you. Robert Hindle, followed by Dolan Blom.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council and staff. My name is Bob Hindle. I'm Vice President with Parking Concepts. Our firm has been providing your parking management services for the past 11 years or so, and we're very pleased to have the recommendation from staff for, for a new contract. We're, we're looking forward to continuing to provide you with what we believe to be first-class service in, in all areas of parking management, including the security and the maintenance of your facilities. I think our track record speaks for itself, very, very few complaints, a lot of creative problem-solving, working with staff, working with the merchants, working with the various commercial tenants in the area. Again, we're very proud of our record and we look forward to working with you on this next contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Dolan Blom. Okay. John Gantis, followed by Gary Pitts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council. My name is John Gantis and I am Council for Modern Parking. You know, I don't really know where to begin. I just like a repeat of what I've said the last three times. I think I'm going to begin talking as, as a 32-year citizen of the City of Glendale and a 16-year member of your commissions. I have to tell you that I, this process is, is unique. I've never seen a process where you start out, as we started out, you play by the rules and then somehow you don't make it. But let's, let's move on. I want to talk about the numbers. I, I believe the staff is wrong because I've spent this afternoon running the numbers. The contract that you're asked on Item B to, to, to the three months at $465,000 is a $155,000 per month, which, which comes out to, and I took all of the extensions you've had. You've had 12, 12 monthly, or three extensions, a total 12 months, for a total of $1,810,546 that has started since this process started last July. That is not a $1,460,000 contract. They, that has not been what you've been paying Parking Concepts. And on this contract, this extension up till June, you're going to be paying them an average of $14,000 more a month than you, excuse me, 14 and, and for, $18,000 more a month than if we had been awarded the contract for the four-month period. So, Mr. Quintero, in moving that along, our average is approximately $1,500, something thousand dollars. It's about a $300,000 figure that this city has paid over the last year that would not have been paid had this process gone forward. I think we need to step back. One of the issues is the, the process itself. This process started in June and the process was, we are going, we, we want you to negotiate. We spent seven months negotiating with the staff painfully, lengthy negotiations. Mr. Casazian, could you pass these out to everybody? And came up with a contract that frankly, started out in something that we didn't anticipate, but we did exactly what we were told to do. We negotiated, we put the best price forward and it was brought to you in February of 2009 with, of course, a staff recommendation. I don't know what happened in February of 2009, except we had parking, the people coming here saying, wait a minute, their contract's gone up, we can give you a lower price. Well, indeed, we're here today. We, we go back out, you told the staff to do this in 30 days. It's been 100 and, almost 120 days since this was done. There wasn't, if the, I've reviewed the motion, there was no RFP. It was, bring us up to date with figures and we will look at them and compare them and then come back with the figures. That wasn't done. We changed the ground rules and now we're here saying, gee, Modern is, is, is more expensive. Why is it more expensive? You'll hear. But the bottom line is, the rules changed. We moved. And that's, and more importantly, we got to negotiate with our poker hand on the table. We had exposed our, our competitive edge. We had given a break to the city and all of a sudden they're saying, okay, now everything's on the table, you now can negotiate with that. You can draw to a poker hand that's sitting on open, open table. That's just simply not something that, that I think is a fair process. I think what has to happen is, we need to keep what was fair, fair. And what was fair was the process that was started in July of 2008, painfully lengthy negotiations to get to, to February. And we were the low-cost operator and I'm here to tell you, we've gone over this. I've talked to them, to, to my people. We are prepared to move back to where we were. We would recommend that we will honor our contract that we negotiated and was presented to you in March of 2009 for the three-year period, those figures in there. We're prepared to honor those and, and go forward with the contract. And oh, by the way, we are prepared to go, you can give notice tomorrow, it's a 30-day notice proposal, where we will be ready to roll by August 1, 2009. We're ready to sign the contract tonight. Before I go too, too much further, I, I wanted to pass out to you the article. I think this is really a telling article that was in today's Glendale News Press and I've passed it to each of you. And I quote from the end of that article where it says, we've had to, we've had to, this is a quote from Mr. Hindle, who you just spoke, who you heard from. "We've had to economize in just about every area," he said. "We had to take a different approach. This went from a best practices proposal to low cost." Members of the council, Mr. Mayor, we are going to take you and give you not only a low-cost proposal, because the proposal that was there in February is overall for next year, $40,000 savings to this community over what PCI is proposing. And we're going to give you the lowest cost and the best proposal. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. John Gantis, I'm sorry, Gary Pitts, followed by Mike Mohill.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, we started this process in the spring of '08 responding to an RFP. And we felt at that time, it was the responsibility for us to provide our lowest cost at that moment in time, responding to the RFP. We provided that lowest qual, lowest cost and, and our qualifications and came in with a total of $4,744,000. With that price and the response to the RFP and the, the member of, the panel members, we were rated number one overall. Came to City Council, we went back and negotiated over the next six months, came back with a number of $4,923,000, $155,000, excuse me. And then in the process, went through this litany of suspicion. And, and as Janelle said, it was ambiguities, which were verified, which came back to City Council and approved with the low number, with our qualifications. And we were somewhat surprised that it wasn't approved at that time. We thought, we went through a fair process. We thought we justified our positions, negotiated fairly. And lo and behold, we went, we then had to go through this, what I call a do-over or a mulligan, or let's do it again, let's see if we can get it right, kind of business. We did subsidize, we were planning on subsidizing the security company in our first round. We didn't do that the second round. First round, we got blamed for doing it. Told if we did that, there's something more suspicious about Modern Parking. They're taking part of their profits and subsidizing the security. So now we don't do it the second round, we get blamed for that too. Now your costs are higher. One of the things that we asked in the second RFP process was to be given the union rates, the, when this process started 15 months ago was a non-union garage. And we're pleased that it has gone union. it has gone union. When we were negotiating, we were given all of the prices for the Glendale city employees, which averaged, I think, $8.38. Well, when the RFP went back out in March, the union had been implemented, the union program had been implemented. So we asked, well, gee, you know, so we can bid fairly, what are those new union rates? And we were not given a privilege to that information. City staff said that we should talk to the union, the union refused to give us that information. So we were actually operating blindly in this process. Our numbers in March of '09 were $4,928,000, excuse me, $4,923,000. The way I'm calculating Parking Concepts' numbers now, they're in $4,928,000. So obviously, they had the target to go after. In the process, yes, our rates did go up. They went up for certain reasons, but as Mr. Gantis has just explained, we would like to honor that number, the number that we brought, that was brought to council back in March, the $4,923,000. We feel that we've done everything fairly, and we respectfully request that city council, please take this into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Mike Mohill, that's the last speaker card.
Mr. Mayor, council members, as you all probably know, I was in sales for about 27 years, and I dealt with competitive bidding all the times. Low bidder is always wonderful. I often was always the highest bidder. Do you know what? Often I'd have, my client would call me six, nine months later and say, you know, Mike, we got the low bidder, but you know what? We didn't get the better product. You know, there's an old cliche, bird in hand's worth two in the bush? And you know what your present company's doing for you? They have a track record. That's very important, a track record. The other company, you know, they'll say anything they need to get the job. Company you have right now knows your situation, they've worked with your staff. You know what you have, and you know the results already. There's the old cliche, good things are rarely cheap, and cheap things are rarely good. Be careful what you wish for. Being cheap isn't always the best. I would say stay with the known commodity. They've proven themselves time after time, and that's important. After all, we re-elected some mayors, excuse me, we re-elected some councilmen for past performance. They didn't want to throw you guys out, to be honest with you. So you must be doing a good job. I think the present company that's doing the parking for you people are doing a good job. Any complaints? I haven't heard any complaints. Thank you for my two cents.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the speaker cards. Any comments or questions? Mr. Najarian?
Well, let me start out. What we did, I forget how many months ago when we first had this, and we had a lot of discussion and a lot of controversy on the quality of one company versus another. And part of that was a result of Modern coming in so low on one of the items, I think it was the insurance item, and the security, if I'm not mistaken. It raised some questions. What we did then was to determine all three of these companies to be qualified and to put it out for a bid. Essentially, what that means is any, as I understand it, that any discussion on quality of services is removed, that we can't discuss quality of services, that it's solely up to the bid. It becomes essentially a bid at this point. As long as each one of those companies meets the minimum requirements, we have to give it to the low bidder. I don't see any other way around it. Things did change. Aside from everyone looking at each other's bids, we went and changed several items. The insurance was increased from $1 million to $2 million. The salaries were given minimum ranges. Clarifications made regarding the security services. So to say that, oh, well, Parking, because they only have $250,000 allocated to maintenance, is going to be doing less of a job than Modern, which is charging $307,000, well, let's extend that one more step. That Central Parking, that's going to spend $470,000 on maintenance, is going to do an even better job than both of those two companies. And that's not what we have here. They're all meeting the basic qualifications. I don't see us as having any other choice than to take the low bid. And to come up here today and say, well, well, I mean, this was a whole process, and to come up here and say, well, forget what we've given you in the report, what we gave staff, we're going to go back to our earlier price. I mean, that's just pulling a figure out of thin air. I don't know how you can do that. That just doesn't seem right at all. But we'll have, you know, an auction here, a live auction as to what everyone wants to bid for the parking. They're all deemed qualified. Once we made that decision, you know, we reset the clock, we brought all the horses back to the starting gate, and we rang the bell again. And the one that came in with the lowest bid, $200-some-thousand dollars lower, which is not a small amount of change in this budget environment, is Parking Concepts. So I need to hear something ground-shaking to move me off of a support for Parking Concepts to get this contract.
Thank you, Ms. Freedom.
I just have a question for Mr. Najarian, and forgive me, because I wasn't here last time, so I'm playing catch-up.
Okay.
I understand the idea of going with a low bidder in a process. Maybe I'm mistaken about what I heard, but didn't we have a low bidder last time who wasn't accepted?
We had some question, yeah, essentially, there was a bidder who had a low bid, there was a low bidder, and that was not accepted. Council's decision at that point was to reject those bids and to return it, to deem everyone qualified, because as I said, that's where we were getting into...
Okay, but we had the same three people then, same three companies then, same three companies now.
Right.
And I'm just wondering why we changed our process of, I guess in the last time we decided that we didn't, we shouldn't be going with the low bidder, but this time we should. So I'm just trying to figure out what changed.
What we did is, we reset the qualification bar, and we increased some things like the insurance, the security, and the minimum salaries. So in a sense, there was a supplemental that was done in April, supplemental RFP, and based on those...
So in other words, the last RFP didn't just ask people to submit their lowest bid? That wasn't the criteria?
Correct. Correct. It was an RFQ, Request for Qualifications, which is different than an RFP. And there's a difference there. The difference is the qualification criterion. So what we did is, threw out the qualification criterions and deemed everyone to be equally qualified, and then asked them for the bidding.
Mr. Magdalian?
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, all the service contracts we have issued, it's called Request for Proposal, and we rank, we look at the qualification of the proposers, we look at their cost price. So we, each one of them, if you get 100 points, you look at their experience qualification, they get a certain number of points. So all three companies, Central Parking and Modern and Parking Concepts, if you look at the qualification score PCI had received from the panel, the highest qualification score as far as their experience of operating these types of facilities. What made the difference was in the cost proposal. So when you added up the total percentages, then Modern Parking was ranked higher in that first go-round. When we brought it back to city council, we asked to negotiate with Parking Concept and Modern was because in this kind of, when they're very close, we've asked for best and final offer. City council selected that we just go with Modern because their price was half a million dollars lower, and that was a big saving compared to PCI. So, but there were some issues that we were concerned about, subsidizing security and so on. So we went back with Modern, we negotiated with them, we actually negotiated a contract, we brought it back to council with, that verified their insurance costs, we verified the cost figures that they had proposed. So we recommended city council to go with Modern Parking in the February meeting. Again, we received input from the existing, the other operators such as Parking Concept and Central Parking, and council, after receiving all of that information, decided that these three now deemed them qualified. We don't have to look at their qualifications or assign any points to them, just ask for a supplemental cost proposal. And whoever is the cheapest, and given the economy the way it is, it's much more competitive, potentially we may even get a better price from them. So this is what they did. They looked at each one of the companies, based on some of the changes that we made in the cost proposal requirement, they proposed again. Yes, they all had the knowledge to their each other's cost proposal, what was indicated in the staff report. We did not release to any of the companies the detailed cost proposal that they had submitted. So all they looked at the total security costs, maintenance costs, engineering costs. And based on that, that's what they proposed. So based on that figure, you see the difference of $200,000 between PCI and Modern. If that makes it more clear.
What he said. Okay, well, I, look, the way I remember it, this company had the lowest, Modern had the lowest bid, and here on the dais, all of a sudden, questions became innuendos that, could they do it, and were they this, and were they the other? This is a company that has a contract at the city of Pasadena, I remember that, and also Culver City, so they've done municipal contracting in the past. When you, when the staff went and asked the questions to investigate, to find out whether it was all the real deal, and they turned out to be the real deal, but no matter what they do, they can't get the contract. The existing operator that's been here for 10 years, they're going to get the contract. And now miraculously, I guess, they are the lowest bidder. So, look, I'm just not persuaded, guys. I'm just not persuaded. Mr. Drayman?
Well, just as a couple of things before I get into it. Just by the way, the reason I was chuckling earlier when my colleagues were having their exchange was because Mr. Magdalian was at the podium trying to get a word in edgewise, that's all. Yeah. The other thing is, is that I just wanted a clarification. I did ask the city attorney, because the impression was given that this is, that there's no discretion on the part of the council at this point in terms of lowest bid, this go-round, and I think that is incorrect if that is the, that's what's being suggested.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, council member Drayman, because this is not a bid process, it's part of our regular bidding process for like public works, construction contracts and those types of things, it is a, it's an RFP, it's not, you are not required to select the company that submitted the lowest bid. You're able to look at all the factors that were submitted as part of the proposal. I took council member Najarian's comment as a policy statement that we should, that you should select the lowest bidder.
No, I understood him to mean that too, but for people looking in, I just wanted to make it clear that that is, if the suggestion was that we are bound to do that, that we have no discretion in this matter, that isn't the case. I viewed it as more rhetorical, but I just wanted to make it clear for those who were looking in. Look, for me, this is very, very, a very simple thing, you know. We had a process. The process was, we want to get the best value and the best rate for a contract, and what happened? Something I don't think anybody was expecting. Someone new to Glendale came forward with a lower contract, and it wasn't just a little lower, it was considerably lower. And all the rest of the players in our city who are used to receiving the contracts went, huh, how'd they do that? Something must be wrong. A foul, 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 they cried. And it began with them coming here to a meeting and trying to say, somebody somewhere pulled a fast one. We don't know where, we don't know how, we don't know who, but somehow, a fast one was pulled, because how could that have happened? And then we said, okay, well, let's look into it. Staff looked into it, came back and said, no, this is the real deal. Except, guess what? The low bidder did something innovative the other companies didn't think about, and that was, they were going to use some of their profits to subsidize a portion of the contract. Shock of all shocks, they did something innovative. Well, what happened next was a phony letter, and I'm calling it that, that's how I characterize, a phony letter, calling Modern Parking's qualifications and character into question. And of course, that night, that letter was completely exploded as a myth. To me, that was the signal that the foul was not by the low bidder, the foul was being perpetrated by the competitors who just didn't like being knocked off their perch. It was just as simple as that. I think this city deserves better. So then what happens? Well, we go and we say, because the majority wanted to go that way, I mean, it wasn't a unanimous vote, as has been pointed out by everybody here, the majority on the council said, well, you know, now that we've asked Modern to lay out the method by which they were able to be the lower bidder, so that everybody could adopt it or co-opt it, lo and behold, they're not the low bidder anymore. What a shock. This is such a ridiculous debate we're having, in my view. Not that debate is ridiculous, not that my colleagues are, these are all intelligent people and I respect their view. I respected their view the last time we voted. I just disagree with that previous vote, and I'm sticking with that now. We had a process. If our word as a city is to mean anything at all, we have a process. We go through that process, and when it doesn't come up the way we expect, we don't get to go, oh, you know what, staff, go out and double-check it. And then when they come back and say, yeah, that was right, we say, well, let's find a new way to do it. Let's do best two out of three falls, or three out of five falls. That works for TV wrestling, it doesn't work for city contracts, and that just bothers me. It offended my sense of what I believe is a fair process then, and that's just me. I was in the minority then. I voted the way I voted, and that was that. It is nothing personal against Parking Concepts. As the gentleman, Mr. Hindle, pointed out, they've been our contractor for some time now. I'm also familiar with Modern in the sense that I go to the Pasadena Paseo quite often. And I believe they're the contractor there. The owners, I know that is because knowing this was coming up on the agenda, I've become more observant about those things. And so when I was leaving, I noticed their handle on the equipment. I only mention that because it's not, it's not like we're talking about some immensely qualified giant versus some nobody. These are all highly qualified companies, all three of them were. Anyway, I'm not changing my vote, and the reason I'm not is because I am as much voting for them as I, Modern, as I am, voting for an endorsement of the process we were supposed to have in the first place. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments? Mr. Weaver, Ms. Freedom?
All I can say is, over my career, I had to evaluate a lot of bids on contracts, looking at what I saw before, at least to this individual, the numbers didn't track. I think, what was it, five, five originally? Mr. Magdalian, were there five bidders the first time?
Six.
Six. And Modern's were so far out of line with all the other five, so far out of line, it makes sense. My experience told me, look out when you see something that drastically different. You can talk about shaving the profits or whatever to get in, but my experience tells me, no, you don't go along with something like that. Majority directed staff to go back, make sure we're comparing apples and apples, everybody doing the same thing. I would just surprise anybody when Parking Concepts came in the low bid. We wanted it on lowest cost, we wanted it based on what the economy is like today and getting... getting worse. That's the low bid. Certainly not going to give away $200,000 on here. We sit and haggle about $10,000, $12,000 on things. So unless somebody can prove to me that staff or somebody else has pulled a number on us, I look at a low bid, $200,000 lower, and I say, I'm supporting it. Thank you.
Okay, well, before Ms. Friedman speaks, let me say that I'm interested in the concept of going back to the original contract that Modern Parking proposed, 4.923 contract. That's specifically what I'm interested in.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, I'm sorry. That is, that is exactly what I'm talking about.
Um, yeah. I was not on this council when this came before it the last time, but I remember it because I was watching it at home on television. And I didn't have the benefit of having the paperwork in front of me, but I heard the arguments, and I remember very clearly being mystified as to what was going on, and not understanding why a company that came in with the lowest bid was, I understand, putting them through a lot of scrutiny into looking closely, but it seemed to me that the council did a very good job, even that night, of asking a lot of very pertinent questions. I remember asking why their contract in Santa Monica, I think it was, had been terminated, and being told, and actually, them having a letter from the city saying, we were very happy with their service, but we don't need this kind of parking arrangement anymore. And I remember them very, going through very persuasively all of the council's concerns and answering it. And I didn't understand why at the time. Then the final vote was to go on and sort of throw it back out again. It didn't make sense to me at the time. And I feel that, I can't help but feel that maybe this, that this council at the time did something that just procedurally was, was unusual, put it that way. And I understand the idea of staying with a company that you know, but you either, in my mind, you either just make that decision that we're going to continue this contract, or if you're going to go out, as, as this city did, you have to then follow your own rules and your own procedures. And I'm not convinced that we did that in this case. And that's what troubles me. I don't, I still don't understand why, given that you had these three very qualified companies who answered all the questions, the last time around, the low bidder wasn't accepted. So, and I will say, I do not know these, these men. I've met a few of them just in the last few weeks, just on passing, but I certainly don't have a history with any of them, and I don't want to insult the vendors that we have. But I do feel that I'm not comfortable with, with what happened along the way with this particular contract. And I would support my colleagues', and it's not a motion yet, but their inclination to accept the offer, to go back to that original bid, which is where I believe this should have stopped. I think that this, this meeting, you know, this, this particular hearing shouldn't be happening right now.
Okay, Ms. Ngerian, then I would like to have someone come up from Modern so we can legally and officially see if that is in fact what they're willing to do. Mr. Ngerian?
Well, I think the proposal and the whole process that brought us to where we are today shows exactly what was wrong. Confirmed exactly the suspicions that we had six months ago. And that is, something was very unusual about Modern's bid. And when we put everyone on the same playing field, what happens? All of a sudden, Modern's bid goes up 300,000. That's exactly what happened, and you heard it from Mr. Bagdanian. Now, we just can't go back, because we've changed the RFP. We've increased the insurance from 1 million to 2 million. We've increased the minimum salary requirements for the management staff. We've increased the security services section. So to say we want to go back to where we were, we can't go back. And this highlights what was wrong last time we did this. Modern was being very creative in their figures, and when we said, this is what you have to do for management, this is what you have to do for security, this is what you have to do for insurance, lo and behold, that advantage that they had, that extremely unusual price that they had for insurance and security evaporated. And this is the figures we have today. I am, you know, in this budget situation, 200,000 is a lot of money, but to say that what we did today was not fair, I take great issue with that. This was much more than fair compared to what we did six, seven, eight months ago, when we left it very loose as to what each contractor was going to provide in terms of their services. We nailed it down in several different areas, and this is what we got. I don't know, and we've got another number thrown out. Mr. Gantis says they'll do the job for 4.9 million, 4.950, whatever that is. I mean, we're just throwing numbers around like crazy here. I think we're not doing a, well, Modern is throwing numbers around like crazy. I think we're doing an injustice to staff, to all the work that they did, to us, who we're trying to compare apples to apples, and this is what we have before us.
Well, let me say, I've been on the city council for eight years, and it never sort of ceases to amaze me that when we go out for new RFPs, we always get much better deals. The last good deal we got has been the what? The health, the HMO, the health services? How much cheaper was that contract that we just signed?
Hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Right, hundreds of, so we've had an operator, we've had a vendor doing our, some of our health services and so forth. Year after year after year, we got a new company in, and now all of a sudden, we're saving hundreds of thousands of dollars. That was true of our recycling center. Our recycling center, I don't remember the exact figures, but it might even have been costing us money to have someone do recycling for us. We went out for a new contract, and all of a sudden, we had hundreds of thousands of dollars coming into the city treasury. So I'm not at all surprised that this company came in and all of a sudden reshuffled and thought things out and decided to take a smaller profit, and they came in at a lower bid. And by the way, I, once again, Parking Concepts, they do an excellent job. I've been going to those city structures for years and years and years. All of the personnel that work there have done a great job. It's been fairly clean, from time to time, there are issues, but very few. And so they've done a good job. I'm not saying that, that they haven't. But they were not the lowest bid. And this other company that I, that I don't know from Adam, I have no idea, who, you know, who I didn't even have the name quite right, they came in at a lower bid, and they clearly have done this in the past and are continuing to do it, like Mr. Drayman points out, including Pasadena. So legally, I don't know whether we can go back to that original number or not, but I'd like to have someone from Modern come to the podium and number one, state that you're willing to, to do it for that original number.
I just want to clear up a couple of things in this rebid. Our insurance number did not change. The, the ceiling went up. We have $11 million umbrella coverage. I think it went from 1 to 2 million, went to 11 million. We have an umbrella coverage. Our insurance rate did not change whatsoever. As well did our management fee change from March till now. So I just want to clear that up. Back in the staff report, in March, year two, three, and four, year two was 1.581154, year three was 1628517, and then year four was 1740. Taking out the three months on the 39-month extension, those are the numbers that we're willing to live on.
Okay. And you are also going to retain the current workforce? You're not going to bring in a new workforce in terms of the actual operators there at the different?
That's our intention, yes.
Parking structure.
What were those numbers again? What's the cumulative number for?
Year two was 1581154. Year three was 1628517, and year four was 1740.
So is that the 4.9 that Mr. Gantis said you would take?
I think so, yes.
So where are you cutting from? I mean?
This was, this was our approved, approved staff report from March 03, Councilmember Drayman.
What do we have before us then? It says 5.5.
Well, the 5, the 5.5 was, there's some additions that the city put on top of that.
So you don't want to do the city's additions?
Well, that's up to the city. We, we gave our proposal, and the city adds on contingencies. I, if they want to add on the contingency, it's fine with me.
Well, that's not what Mr. Gantis said. He said, we'll do this contract as proposed for the 4.9. So that you're saying that's not what you're willing to do?
No, I, I'm.
I swear, and that's what he said. Oh, he wanted to go back to the old contract? He'll do the old contract? Okay, read.
No, we're, we're going back to March, I think it was March 3 meeting. And, and the staff-approved budget is what we're doing.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? No, not right now. All right, so the question is, can we as a city council do this?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you can, but you want to hear from Mr. Bagdanian on what's being, what would potentially be left out if we accept the proposal as it was given to us in March of 2009? Because I think there are some differences.
Ms. Bagdanian?
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, the, we reached, the February proposal from Modern, the 4.99 proposal, does not include the items that are listed on your staff report. Insurance, I think we can work with Modern, because their higher ceiling of insurance will be okay. The elevator maintenance is about $67,000. That's not included in their cost. The security, their original cost proposal under what, when we reached an agreement, when we brought it to council, was that they will subsidize the security costs, but any for special events or overtime, we would have to pay a different rate. So that cost is not included in that 4.9. The minimum salary ranges, as far as their project manager and their assistant managers, there might be a difference in that cost. I don't have that exact number with you, but that would be possibly an increase in their cost over and above the 4.9. And then the percentage establishment that is, deals with the benefits to the employees, that's not included in that 4.9. To be accurate, if council chooses to award a contract to Modern, we'll be happy to quickly meet with them next two days and give you a not-to-exceed amount, dollar amount, for your next council meeting, so you can adopt that amount. Just to be accurate. So you know what the extra. One more clarification I have to make. In addition to what we include in the contract, there are some extraordinary maintenance that we budget for in terms of their unforeseen things. People run into the column in the parking facility, we have to do extra maintenance on CCTV cameras, we have to do testing of the sprinkler system. Those are additional costs that we add to whoever gets the contract, but we get approval from city council. So there's about $450,000 of that, that gets added on top of whatever the total amount of the contract is, either it's PCI or Modern. So that's not, that shouldn't be an issue, because we already have a fixed number for that. So it's anything over and above the 4.9, if council chooses to award to Modern, we'd like to meet with them next two days, add up those numbers, and bring you back with a number, so you know exactly what, because that's what we have to include in our contract when we sign a contract and execute with them.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
I have just a question for Ms. Bieding. So it's essentially, it's that contract plus the cost for these additional five items that are listed on the report?
That's right. We would have to get that number from Modern to make sure that they're comfortable, in our fairness to them, that was not included in their February cost proposal. So unless they agree today, which I don't know if they would, that they will include these items, because they have the cost figures, that, but that was included in the June cost proposal.
Mr. Drayman?
If we do that, if that happens, can we make sure that what we're talking about is reality, so we don't use phrases like, could possibly be an increase? Because I'm hearing that language. And so I just want to, we're talking about these five items, we say, you know, minimum salary rate, that could possibly be an increase.
I, we will have a concrete number for you. Again, I use that frame because I don't know what their position would be on this item.
I know why you use that, I know why you use that frame, Mr. Bagdanian, but you're not a, you're not one of the contractors bidding, so.
That's right.
Ms. Spears?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, in terms of what Jono described right now, as, as it relates to Modern, a thought possibly to, to think about, since the largest cost that we see here is the elevator cost of $67,000, with some possible minor other issues such as the security, the salaries, and the employee benefits. So that you don't have to go through this process again, would, would council be amenable to having a not-to-exceed amount added to the 4.923 amount of March of 2009, that Jono could then go work with, so that it doesn't have to come back to council and for you to have to go through it again? So 67,000 plus some other amount, possibly not to exceed, I don't know, $100,000. But again, just an option out there for council to consider.
I'd feel, I'd just add, I'd feel comfortable with that, as long as, as Mr. Bagdanian can sort of ballpark, would give us the figure now, as far as what that would be.
Well, just to put a ceiling, you can look at PCI's 5.3 number. I mean, I, again, I, I don't want to be in a position, speaking on behalf of Modern, but the cost proposal for PCI was 5.3. So obviously, we don't want to be at 5.3 level if they're at 5, 4.9. So there's about a $300,000 difference between the 4.9 and the 5.3 that PCI has proposed. So if council desires to close that gap, we will then negotiate with them if they agree to, and bring, and have that number be part of the total contract cost that we will approve.
And if that can't be agreed to, we'll come back to the council?
Yes. And plus, we would still have to add that assigned cost that are standard, that we have that figure.
Okay, well, it's up to you guys to make the decision, which way do you want to go?
Well, if Mr. Bagdanian is comfortable with that number, I mean, I'm, I'm more than happy to.
Feel the same way.
To go that route.
Okay, well, let's have a motion in a second. Would you want to read the motion to us, or the concept it is, Mr. Garcia?
Sure. Just, I guess I would just, based off the existing motion as part of the report, it would be that Glendale City Council, hereby approved and accepts the proposal of Modern Parking, and that all other proposals, B and R, are hereby rejected. City managers authorized to negotiate and enter into an agreement with Modern Parking for a amount not to exceed $5,321,544 for a 36-month term?
With two one-year extensions?
With two one-year extensions.
All right, is someone willing to make that motion?
I will make that motion.
Second.
All right, more comments?
So just so I'm clear, the 5.321 will be the ceiling? Will be the price?
The ceiling will, because if you desire for us not to come back to council, that would be our desire, that would be our ceiling. We will negotiate up to that. Obviously, we will negotiate as low as possible, so we can be as close to that original 4.9 that they proposed.
Yeah, and I'd like to be clear that that's exactly what I'd be looking for. As close as, as possible to that number.
Modern, I'm sure they'll, they're hearing.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Councilmembers, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Ngerian?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, there's a second motion. Because we had to extend a Parking Concept contract to keep the same hourly, same contract monthly rate, request that we extend our contract on a month-to-month basis for another 30 days. We have to buy contract, you want 30 days notice to terminate their contract, so request council's consideration of that motion.
Okay, I need a motion for that.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Ngerian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Next, please.
At F is Director of Public Works regarding award of contract for operation of Glendale Diloride. At F1 is a motion authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with Southland Transit Inc. for the operation and maintenance of the city's Diloride Demand Response Paratransit Service, not to exceed $5,88,380 for a five-year period, with two one-year extension options, and two is a resolution appropriating $106,532.
Ms. Spears?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we'll go back to Jono Bagdanian, our Traffic and Transportation Administrator, for another round.
Mr. Mayor, we have a very short staff report, if you wish to hear that for this item. item. Otherwise, we can answer only questions on this item, whichever council desires. Patrick Engel, our transit manager, is available to give you a very short, brief representation on it. If you don't want the presentation, we can answer only questions on this item, whatever council desire is.
Does the representative of the Dial-A-Ride wish to speak this evening? No. All right. I have two speaker cards, Barry Allen followed by Mike Mohill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff, and of course, the public. I'm Barry Allen. I've looked at this proposal, actually, the staff report, and I do have some questions about it. I note that there was no investigation reports from the California Highway Patrol, and the Highway Patrol is the one who inspects Dial-A-Ride buses. I noticed that there was no report on complaints about the Southland Transit providing Dial-A-Ride, and we do know at least one instance where they refused to board a service animal and a claim was filed with the city. And I know that the city clerk's office also is involved in inspections of the Dial-A-Ride buses, and I don't see any report from the, from the, whoops, it was five minutes ago.
No, not five, but I'll give you some more time. Go ahead.
Thank you. I also note on the document, and in the staff report, it shows pass-through city costs. And I notice those are all over the board, and I think that needs to be considered. And again, MB Transportation did 91.8 on the scoring. And I noted earlier this evening with the GWP, we accepted a bidder who was not the lowest bidder, and I think that this needs to go back. And one other thing, and I will be done, is it really concerns me that this is, this is June the 30th. June the 30th is when this contract ends. This city council, according to the document, this city council should have had some advance notice in order to make a decision on a contract that starts tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Mohill? Okay, Mr. Mohill's not in. Move it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any comments? Well, let's not let this-
They're doing one and two.
They're doing a-
You mean, you're asking for a question? I have a question if you want a question.
Well, they're doing a good job.
I clarify, is Mr. Najarian's motion one and two?
Yes.
All right, and Mr. Drayman has a question.
Only because you are demanding of me, it's Mr. Allen. My question is of Mr. Allen. Mr. Allen, you were talking about the report from the Highway Patrol where they refused to let a service animal board. I'm just curious what kind of service animal it was, or if it even says-
A leader dog.
A leader dog.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Next, please.
Next would be Oral Communications, Mr. Mayor and council. And discussion will be limited to five minutes. This is, discussion's limited time is not part of this agenda. Speaker, there's allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision, and a matter may be referred to staff through the city manager for investigation and report.
Could I have the oral communication cards? All right. First speaker is Barry Allen, followed by Mike Mohill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff. I'm Barry Allen. I will be brief this evening. And one of the issues that keeps coming up with Vanguardians is that we've received numerous calls from people who have asked us to pursue the issue of the city manager providing performance bonuses to certain unnamed employees. They've asked us to do what is necessary to get the names of the employees and the amounts of money that they were given for performance bonuses. And I think we have demonstrated to the city attorney's office from the Attorney General's office that there are opinions exactly on target on this matter, that I believe Mr. Garcia spoke to it erroneously the last time we brought this up. But we are going to have to pursue this because that's what the public has asked us. And this council can certainly direct the city attorney or the finance department to provide the information as to the names of the employees who received the performance bonuses and the amounts that they received. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, I had questions for you last time you left the chamber. I hope you stick around this evening. Mike Mohill, followed by John Lee. Mr. Lee? And Mr. Lee will be followed by Vace.
Mr. Mayor and city council, and women. In September of 1999, Ginger Brimberg was our mayor. When the rededication of the Glendale Transportation Center as we know it today was dedicated, she was the person who was there. And she made a request. She says, "I want all of the ambassadors to form a semicircle behind me." We were the people and are the people today who still provide the only contact between Amtrak and the passenger, because there's no agent there. Lately, a situation has developed which can be cured by the simple addition of putting locks back on the outside restrooms, both men's and women's. The last train comes through at 9:25 at night, and after that, the night people come out. And even though the restrooms are fully stocked every day, two rolls of toilet tissue, a big roll of hand towels, certain mornings, they have been there, and they have ripped off every single inch of this kind of paper and the big rolls of the hand towels, simply because the locks on the restroom doors are broken. Now, if there's no trains running after 9:25 and those doors were then locked, that would alleviate and cure the problem right there. That's all it takes, is a pair of locks and a man to install them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lee, and we'll respond in a minute.
But I think on behalf of the council, I'd like to present him with a City of Glendale pin to add to his collection.
Yeah, thank you.
Save the city money.
Vace.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Oh, one postscript. Some of the people in our group said, "You shouldn't do this at the city council because you might get us all kicked off of the property."
No, absolutely not.
Why would we want to be kicked off of the property when all we're trying to do is make sure things are running smoothly and happily?
Absolutely.
Not a mess.
That's fine. We've seen, I've seen you there for many, many years and your friends.
How many friends you have there, Mr. Lee?
It varies from a low of six to maybe as many as eight.
You tell them the city council gave you a warrant.
Okay.
And pins to add in there.
Not only that, Mr. Lee, but you've brought the most innovative prop of anybody all year, so.
You're making a point. You have to have some evidence to go with the point.
Absolutely.
And furthermore, the last time I saw you there, there was a young man in your ranks that seemed very knowledgeable and was part of the group. Okay, next speaker is Vace. Your name for the record. Vace, you don't want to give your last name for the record?
I'll give it, that's fine. My name is Vace Wukasian, and I've been Glendale for 10 years. I just have one thing to say. Why is, why do the cops get raised and, in the meantime, like where does that money come from? Like, all we do is, all they, they give us tickets and all the cops do, they get raised and we get nothing. And then, one more thing I was going to say, I don't feel like nobody is listening to us just because, like, we Armenian. I feel like there's some, there's some issue in the cops, like, they don't like us or something. Because I don't feel like anybody is listening to us. Every time I go in the streets, all we get is tickets, that's it. Why doesn't nobody listening to us? Why do they get raised and all we get is tickets and nothing happens? Just don't understand why.
Okay, you mean driving tickets, correct?
What happened?
Driving tickets is what you mean?
Yeah, just ticket in general. I feel like that's how they get the money, from tickets. We work, we work hard and we pay tickets, and I feel like that's how they get the salaries, from giving us tickets. And just because, like, I'm Armenian, it doesn't mean like I'm stupid, I get what's going on. I feel like nobody is listening, the court is not listening to us. We go, the cops talk like one minute and the judge listens to them, but we talk for five minutes, we give them evidence, nobody is listening to us. I just think there's something wrong. Why is nobody listening?
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Okay, that concludes Oral Communications. Are there any responses to the speakers? Ms. Friedman?
Lee. I wanted to thank the gentleman from the trains, the train station, for what he does and for bringing that to our attention. I would be more in favor for cleaning in the morning and replacing the supplies than locking the doors if people are needing to use it even after hours. I'd rather that they were able to use a bathroom than had to be relieving themselves on the streets. So I think that would be the more humane option that I would prefer. I just don't know if we're cleaning the station or if that's an MTA or Amtrak. Okay, so it seems like adding a morning to the schedule and replenishing any supplies would be in order. In terms of performance bonuses, just from my own education, is that something that's pre-negotiated with employees?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, councilwoman Friedman, no, that is not something that is pre-negotiated. And when and if it's given out, it's given out very sparingly throughout the years, whether we're in good economic times or bad. But as of right now, that is all on hold, and no bonus pays have been approved in this current fiscal year. And so that's not something that's pre-negotiated, no.
So it would seem that in this, in this current situation, it's, I realize that Mr. Starbird's not here, but it would be unusual, I would think, to give a performance bonus this year.
It would be very unusual.
Any other comments? Okay, well, to Mr., to the speaker who mentioned the tickets and so forth, if you have a specific instance, if you have a specific situation that you feel you were unjustly treated, then make sure you step forward. Either you go to the police department and, you know, file a complaint is basically what you would do. Or if you don't want to do that, perhaps you can contact the city manager's office and give us a more clear indication of what you think happened and, you know, what you feel wasn't proper. Okay, and then Mr. Allen, once again, I just, you're talking about transparency, audits, et cetera, so I wanted to once again ask you, not only myself, but there are many, many people that have asked me for an accounting of Vanguard, which has been a nonprofit now for quite a few years, and a list of the checks that were deposited to the nonprofit, in other words, of contributors to the nonprofit, and the checks that were written by the nonprofits, either to vendors or to yourself or any employees you might have, or, but I think that would go a long way to have people understand exactly what Vanguard does, but specifically the monies that were given to the corporation and the checks that were written, I assume, by you. And then furthermore, I think people also would like to have an accounting of the money that was raised on behalf of the Thompsons in their legal defense. So that's all I have.
New business.
What's next, Mr. Clerk?
Is there new business?
Is there any new business?
Yes. I'd like to move that a settlement of the City of Glendale civil suit for subrogation in City of Glendale versus Vigan Bagdassarian at all Superior Court case number EC 047973B and is hereby approved in the amount of $32,000 for the city.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Can I move with your adjournment?
Want to wish everybody a happy 4th of July, happy and safe 4th of July.
We're all meeting after hours at the Amtrak station.